This conference will now be recorded.
I'll answer.
Call meeting order with everyone please.
Let's do this. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And welcome everyone. First order of business would be to approve the agenda. Bruce, do you have any changes? There is an amended agenda, you will note, under the Sheriff's time, in particular, under the Public Safety and Service Center project update would be discussion about scheduling a committee meeting to discuss the use of building next door. Other than that, there are no changes. We have any conflicts as well if anyone.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
That's a good idea Brandon. Motion second for approval of the agenda. All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we need approval of the meeting minutes from Mark to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, that's a motion in second for approval of the minutes. All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Phil, do you have any questions? On the bill.
I'll have my answer. Thank you.
Thank you. And will you schedule them?
Yep.
Can you approve the bills to present?
Second.
Motion second for approval of the bills. All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. You have any travel worries?
I have none.
Okay, how about personnel?
I have some. All right, I'll start with the Sheriff's Office. Have a classification change for Hunter Wood going to a correction officer two grade one base pay of twenty-five fifty-five full-time permanent employee effective on four six. A classification change for Daniel McNee going to a correction officer two grade three base pay of twenty-six sixty-one full-time permanent employee on four six of twenty-two-five. And Troy Thompson Stepways going to Deputy Sheriff one grade two base pay of thirty-one forty-three also effective on four six. A man, a new hire, Richard Rosendahl, who will be a correction officer two grade three base pay of twenty-six sixty-one and this will be effective on May first.
Motion to approve the Sheriff's request.
Second.
Okay, my motion is second for approval of so many people. Any discussion?
I was just wondering Brandon, where they find a place to live? Most of the, there's two that are out in the county at the Word of Bell or.
Yep. Yep, there is. Yep. Um, there is no residency policy as long as they meet the requirements.
I know there is.
Yep.
Yeah, I just wondered where they found residence.
Yeah.
To realize where the most open space would be.
Yeah. I guess I'm not sure where they live.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Nope, I got one more. Um, this is a classification change for Vanessa Adrian. She is transferring from the Sheriff's Office to the Highway Department. She will be a secretary, our county employee three grade one base pay of twenty-five sixty-four and this will be effective on April fourteenth.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in second for approval. All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you Greg.
All right. Vanessa, uh, where's your vote?
All righty, that's on March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Total amount of deposit in the banks is twenty-three million, seven-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand and ninety-three cents. Five-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and ninety-three cents, sorry. In that amount is the bank balance of twenty-two million, six-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars and sixteen cents. Money market, one million, eighty-three thousand, ninety-two dollars and seventy-seven cents. Total amount of actual cash is one thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty. Total amount of checks and drafts in the treasure possession not exceeding three days is three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and twenty-one cents. And the cash in the treasures possession is seven thousand, seventy-two dollars and sixty-nine cents. Petty cash, two thousand, seven hundred, seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars for a total of twenty-four million, sixty-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents.
Move, we approve the orders, counsel of the treasurer.
Second.
Okay, that's a motion in second for approval. All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Room two management, report any reports.
Just need a motion to authorize the chairman to sign.
Sure.
Second. Okay, that's a motion in second for approval for signature. All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Second.
Yes.
Okay, the Central City and St. Ange bonds.
This is a yearly requirement by that county to approve the bonds for Central City and St. Ange. Central City is a hundred-and-fifty thousand and St. Ange is a fifty-thousand-dollar bond. Just need a motion to approve those.
So moved. Second.
Okay, that's a motion in second for approval. All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Convergent agreement? Bruce, where card access?
Mr. Chairman, we've been looking for authorization to allow Greg from ISNT to sign the agreement. It's software related, nothing to do with hardware. If you have any questions, yeah.
Bruce, report.
So this is the card system that we have now. This is a second system that we have, I think, that operates the building next door. So, um, they were separate from, from this building. So the idea would be to use all the existing hardware, I think, over there, but then we have to have a software agreement. To be able to operate it. To remain going forward.
Motion approved. Second. Okay, that's a motion in second for approval and further discussion. Seeing that all in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Sheriff's report.
Nothing to report today.
Absolutely nothing.
No, things are going good.
Going great.
Yeah.
Well, did you, or anyone have any questions for?
Yeah, I have one. Do you have any, am I in agreement yet?
That was Brian's and I'm not sure. So, that's a good question for Brian. Actually, we haven't had any, any, from the discussion, I know that Sheriff and I think Jamie are putting some information together, but we haven't had a chance to get together yet.
Oh, okay.
I think that the move is consuming a lot of Sheriff's time still.
Okay, thanks.
We'll keep you posted. We have not forgotten about it. I keep adding it to the agenda.
Yeah, I always do.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
The Fire Protection District.
Did we do it? Did we do it scheduled?
Oh, yeah.
I was gonna propose that you do it like maybe today after meeting, but of course you have to go to here. Would you wanna do it maybe, uh, you're following your next meeting? Um, you're gonna be here because it should be, port of equalization should go by fairly quickly. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that would be funny.
For me, just a committee meeting.
Well, well.
Um, you and Richard and Sheriff and Tim and Greg. Yeah, that'd work for me. Makes sense?
So April twenty-second?
That'd work for you, Richard.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Yeah, we would have to do an agenda for that. That would just be, that's an informal kind of meeting and we'll report back to the board. Thank you.
We already questioned the panel's agreement, so that does finish that, correct?
Yes.
All right, now the Fire Protection District.
Yeah, and Steve then noticed from the treasurer of the lead Fire Protection District, Ron Muller has resigned effective March twenty-sixth. And they're requesting to fill his position with Nathan Strasbawg, I think is how you say it. And it'll be effective on April twenty-third. That's our first official meeting. And then also they, um, they only got one petition for their open, um, I forgot, one for the outside and one for the inside city. Um, they got a petition for outside of the city limits and that person will take effective. Um, I have it as of April twenty-third. That's when their first meeting is. And then they are asking to appoint Tim Miners, who would be that person to fill the inside the city limits and he lives in Lead, um, on South Main Street. So he qualifies for that. So I just need a motion to appoint Nathan and Tim to those positions effective April twenty-third.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Sleep and a second by Brandon and Flanagan for approval of those positions. All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I have on that. Thank you.
Mr. Day. Almost I forgot something Brandon. That's your job. Did they keep me?
Is that it?
John, that chair can go up.
I see. It's like I'm in a little kid's table, right?
You have to stand up and pull the lever on the, on the, right?
It's, yeah. I don't know why they get put down. So they fit under the table.
Because, because I am OCD and it has to be under.
Yeah, that looks a lot better.
Yeah.
I admit, I.
Well, they feel better too. Yeah, sorry.
Vertically challenged anyway.
John, are you there?
All right. Uh, to start with, I have a utility certificate to be signed. Uh, this is for our, the Elmore Bridge project and, uh, again.
I got a copy.
Do you? Oh, right here. I got it. Um, anyway, this would be the, for the replacement of the Elmore Bridge, uh, the utility companies that are, uh, involved have been contacted and, uh, we just need the certificate to send into the state to continue on with that project.
We'll allow the chairman to sign these. Second. Okay, we have a motion in second for approval of the signature. All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, the next issue on my agenda is we have, uh, the Hill Street closure proposal. They, uh, A two S representing the Stensel Group and their contractors and the city spearfish are advising for a total road closure of Hill Street. They, they are to the point where they're, uh, they're planning on, uh, the widening of the road. I believe there's, uh, you know, curb and gutter, things like that. So, um, originally the water line that they wanted to put in, uh, was the issue, I guess, but now they're to the point where they're doing the actual road construction. And they need to do some, some material moving and, uh, some, some grading to do. So, uh, we do have a representative here from A two S. He's here to answer any of your questions. I think they're pretty optimistic in their timeframe for this. I think it's gonna take much longer than they think, but I'll let him answer that.
So, uh, just to clarify, I'm with over excavating. We're doing the excavation and utility work on the project. Um, you're part for Stensel, uh, A two S is the engineering group, but, uh, so our timeframe for the road work itself, just to do the grading, we've got about roughly three thousand yards material to cut and fill. Uh, shifting it from the southern portion of Hill Street to the northern. And we believe that we could get the grading done in about two weeks and then we still have the water main to put in as well. Which, which the water main, we can, we would like to be able to just coincide with that, basically put the closure in for that portion of work for about three weeks.
John, correct me if I'm wrong, but as I recall the facts, the apartment complex is inside city limits. Hill Street is a county road, still in, in the county. Um, the idea was that the city was gonna take over that portion of the road at some point. Uh, preliminary discussions were that the road wouldn't be closed during construction. Obviously, the request is that the road be closed for up to two weeks. And as I looked at the information, it looks like there's a four-mile detour. Is that part of the deal?
That is correct.
Just, just so everybody has all the context of what the request is.
I also have copies of that detour if you guys.
I think. Uh, my biggest problem, I guess, with this whole deal is the fact that it's still a, a county road. I mean, the, what I was, my understanding of this was gonna be when that was annexed and all of this was to take place, that, that the road would become a city street. And now they have a contract, the city and the contractor have a contract to take the city street over after the construction of the, of the facility is done. Uh, and we're right, uh, we're back where the county's in the middle of this again, once again.
May I ask a question, Chairman?
Yeah.
For the contractor? Uh, what are the practical difficulties that the road closure isn't done? Uh, extends the timeframe of construction now, I guess, but what, otherwise, what problems does it cause you?
Uh, so the biggest one would be safety. The, uh, issue there is that we would, the, the, there's really no good way to attempt to move the material. It would have to go to the northern side of the road. We'd have to cut it. There would be four-foot cuts on the south side of the road, which means that, yeah, there would be, there would be a complete drop-off in that road at that point. Um, however, the only possible way to do that is barricade it or, you know, cone it and then still there's a chance that traffic might be in that excavation at that time.
I would agree, you know, this is, you know, not a, this is not a safe place to have traffic while this work is being done. And then not only that, to do road closure, partial road closures with pilot cars, you know, it'd be, they're, those guy, those cars would be sitting for long periods of time before they could move. That, I think that would upset people more than, than a detour. It would me. I will agree that I, I think that a, a road closure is gonna be necessary at some point for this, this road work to be done. I don't, I don't see any other way. But once again, I keep going back to, I don't know why the county's even involved.
So we make a motion to approve this contingent upon the city having a written document saying they will be taking the road over.
Well, they do have a written document saying.
Do you have a copy?
They have their contract with the contractor, which I've supplied you guys. So that's their document saying that they're gonna take the road over once the, the.
I like to say one with the county that says they're gonna do it. It's my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, I, John, I think the idea is that the city does plan on taking over that stretch of road, but they only wanna take it over after they're able to inspect it and make sure the work is done to their standard or thereabouts, right?
That is correct.
And, and so, so the, in their estimation, it would be premature for them to take it before the work is done and they can see what the final condition is.
We have no financial interest in this.
None.
Work being done, so. How long does it take to get an agreement with the city after change of direction?
That's at the state level and yeah, it would take, it's gonna take some time.
But to have an agreement, the thing is, is we're allowing them to do work on our road. And at the end of the day, if the city's not happy with it, we're stuck with whatever's there. So I don't, we should, there, we should have an agreement with the city that just says, we plan on taking over this road, not with the contractor, the city with us, because the city's the one that's approving this work.
I would agree.
On the county, what they consider the county road.
An agreement with a letter of intent suffice?
MOU, anything, just something from city council and the mayor that says, yes, our intent is to take this over once it's, this construction's completed. This portion of the county road.
Yeah, and of course, we don't have that agreement. I think they would probably say, I don't wanna speak for them. Well, that's the plan. And, and, uh, so.
Well, that's the plan and a written document are, to me, though, are not the same. So I would, I'd make a motion to approve this contingent upon the city sending us a letter, a city, a letter from the city to the county, MOU, whatever you wanna call it, that says, our intent is to take over this road once the, the construction's completed. This portion of road is the construction's completed.
So I, my only concern there is that, that the city is still going to want the road to be in, up to their inspection standards. And then the county's gonna be on the hook for making sure it's up to that standard. So if, if the city is causing this road to be rebuilt, one, their.
I'd rather they take it now too.
Maybe we got a contract, but these cases, the issue is up to that standard, so. How far do we go?
So the county's still gonna be in the middle of that.
Yeah, oh yeah, well.
They, they need, that MOU needs to say that they'll take it on the current condition.
Yeah, they should, they should have taken it before now, but.
Yeah.
Well, I think they can come up with something better if we deny the request. Show the truth.
What I think they would. I hate to hold up the project, um, but this should have been addressed prior.
Yeah.
Okay. What was your motion again, Brandon?
Our motion was to approve, approve the permit contingent upon the city Spearfish. Providing the county with an MOU, some, some type of document that, that shows that they intend to take over jurisdiction, force the road we're dealing with.
That was your second.
Okay, um, in light of that, so with time of the essence, I would imagine, so you won't begin for two weeks and so that agreement could be put together fairly quickly. Uh, subject to me review by me and then authorize the chairman to sign. Otherwise, it would have to sit around for two weeks. Maybe that's a prerogative.
That's included in the motion. That was implied.
And John, did you have something to add?
Um, as far as a permit goes, I would, I would maybe amend the language so it doesn't use the word permit. We're not issuing a permit. We're just agreeing to them closing the road for this work.
That's what, and I wasn't sure this.
Local gov has advised us, period. The local government assistance has advised the county to not sign any permits, whether it be access or utility permits on this project. Uh, because it is a city project that will eventually become a city street. So I would, I wouldn't use the word permit, I guess.
No, stay involved.
Yeah.
Yeah, we shouldn't even be in the middle of this. It's the, the long and the short.
It's a motion that, but they're already, yeah. One final point, John, so we would issue a permit, but would we require?
We'd approve the road closure contingent.
As, as part of approval of the road closure, they follow the M T U D C or guidelines or whatever.
M U T C D, yes sir. Which I believe they are at their closure, right? The only other options I've, that I've seen that would even remotely work is, and it would be more complicated and that would be for them to build a road over to Jonas Boulevard, you know, then that, you know, the city owns all that property. They could do a, there's quite a ravine there that would require a structure. I mean, it would be a lot of work if they can truly do this in the two weeks they talk about. You know, it would be a great deal of work for them to do.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I heard three. I heard two for the dirt work and, and another week for the, for the pipe. So I heard three weeks is the duration.
I believe their, the pipe work, though, they could do some partial pulls for that.
We could do partial pulls, so it was only two timelines. Mr. Jennings. I just, so the motion, I believe, was that, uh, we would sign a, some kind of agreement if the city agrees to, uh, no, I just lost the word. Uh, intends to take over the road. I don't know on that because I think it needs to be worded strong, more strongly.
Yeah.
I don't wanna be intent. I think it needs to be a will or a shall. So we'll take it over. This, who's in the highest authority here? It'd be the state, right? The city's working through the state, we're working through the state, or the state's telling us what we're doing? Is that correct?
For, for the jurisdiction change, the state's gonna be the highest power, I guess.
So in context, I think, uh, to remind ourselves, in order for the road to change jurisdiction, I think it requires, uh, required joint resolution, the resolution by the city, resolution by the county, submit to the state for their approval. And so, um, the city could say, for example, we can't agree to that because, um, unless until the city votes on it, you can't bind the city council people to vote a certain way, if that makes sense. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm just thinking through the practical difficulties, but that's what would have to happen.
So who created the timing on this, on the city taking it over? The city or the state?
Uh, I think that the city. I think, as I understand it, John, correctly, their, their, their idea is that they plan to take the road over, but they want it to be in final condition before they're going to do it. So we, we hold on to it unless and until then. They don't wanna accept the risk involved in construction. Is that fair?
That is what it is now. That isn't what their attempt was at the beginning of this project. The beginning of this project, what we were told is when the city annexed the property, that would be the mechanism, is the word I think they used. The mechanism that changed the jurisdiction of the road.
Commissioner Sleep.
Uh, I guess I'll have to say that I'm against, uh, the motion. I think that if we wait a little while, they will figure a better alternative out for themselves that won't cost them as much. That's, that's my view of it.
Okay, any further discussion?
I'll call the question. Sounds like it's gonna go down, but at least then we can go somewhere, go another direction.
All in favor of the motion, of course, will say aye. Brandon will do roll call. Please.
Jennings.
Name.
Histo.
Aye.
Sleep.
Home.
Flanagan.
Yes.
Ewing.
No.
Motion twice, two, three.
Yep, now we can.
For, for context, I can, I would defer to John. John, um, the, the conditions haven't changed now and these were known and discussed at the time. Is, is that fair?
Yes. Nothing has changed. Um, the scope of the work of this project is exactly the same as it has started. The only problem is, is they keep putting the county in the middle of it.
Damn. For the sake of our county residents' health and safety, I think it's better to shut the thing down and cooperate in that direction rather than keep it open. And they struggle through driving through there and the risk of damages or.
No, I.
Harms. I totally agree with that as well, but I think we're at risk, as Commissioner Jennings said, I think there should be some stronger language that they will definitely be taking it over. Not if it's. I don't know.
And I, Chairman? Yeah, I, I don't know, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're blocking at that, I think, is when there's, it's a procedure and they'll deal with that when it comes. We're just not there yet. and they'll deal with that when it comes. We're just not there yet. So I don't think there's any sense that they're blocking. They just have to get there.
And so by closing it, lowering our risk, we're better off just allowing this and wait for the time to pass when they take it over.
One could argue that you're getting to yes more quickly that way.
That's an argument. Yep.
It is frustrating.
Constantly throws us in the middle. Well, I can't make any motions. It's up to you gentlemen. Where do you want to go from here?
So I would move to approve the road closure contingent on the city entering into an agreement or to begin the process of jurisdiction change for the road. And that the city assumes the risk for the condition of the road project is complete. So the cities, this county's not on the hook if they're, let's see, I don't want the city to come in and, and when the project's complete and say the road is not up to snuff, the county needs to improve it before we will take jurisdiction. I want the city to have that responsibility, that risk. Since it's their project.
Mr. Chairman? And I don't know that we can necessarily do that. Um, I understand that. Uh, but I don't know if that state statute says that that's a precondition for anything. Um, I guess you're conditioning upon the closure upon all of that. But, and so for example, when you say start the process, well, I doubt they're gonna want to do that. I mean, what they do or don't, that's, they'd have to go through the resolution and they're, they're, they're not going to probably act on that resolution until the road is done. So I don't know that there's a whole lot to be done. Contemporary is with that, we have to do our resolution and I think we have to give the notice in the newspaper as well uh, because it's going off of our system. So I, I don't know that there's a whole lot that can actually be done ahead of time, if that makes sense. Maybe we can see, we can see reciprocal resolutions that are ready. I don't know that anybody was, would add to that much.
Okay, but it's leaving us right now with absolutely no protection whatsoever. As Commissioner Jennings said.
Yeah.
When they get it done, the city goes, no, we don't like it. And then they in turn come around and want us to put more of our money into it before they'll accept.
Yeah, can that, they, they also argue that they've already begun the process because they had the agreement with the contractor, they're taking it over.
Um, they, they certainly would. I mean, they've had, certainly had discussions announcing their intent to do so and I don't know, again, that they're trying to renege on that in any way, but it's just a matter of getting there. It's, it's not a perfect deal, I understand.
So is it better to close the road until the end of the project?
Mr. Chairman? If you're considering sort of the public safety aspect of it as a paramount concern, then the answer probably speaks for itself.
So when we have road, our construction projects, our utilities, for example, along the road, uh, we need a bond to make sure that, that the road is back in, in prior condition. We don't have that on this project because the city's entering into the agreement with the contractor.
And I think the state is recommending that we don't issue any kind of permit to occupy or anything as well. So we almost need to have some kind of a permit or if they require a bond, we're not trying to do that. We're just giving permission to close the road.
Right. My concern is the county has no protection to make sure that this gets done right because we're not entering into the agreement with the contractor.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman? Yes. I, I assume that, uh, when the work is done, that the city will pursue that the contractor get the work done according to the, the right specifications. I can't guarantee that. We're not a party to that. But theoretically, they have an agreement and they won't accept it until that's done and they would litigate that, you know. If that's an issue until it's resolved, in the meantime, we would, we would hold the road. Um, but I mean, I don't know that this is terribly complicated work, but I, I'm not an expert on it, so I don't want to say they're not putting a structure in as far as I know. Um, but there's no reason to anticipate that they couldn't get the work done satisfactorily, is there?
I, I think the, the work will be done just fine. I don't think that's going to be an issue. It would just come back to exactly what you're talking about is, is, you know, are, we're putting our faith in the city to say, yeah, they're happy with it and we're going to take responsibility for this road. This would have been so much easier if they would have done that at the beginning of the project, you know? That's just my opinion, but.
Well, it's just gonna probably be rhetorical, but I'm trying to figure out how the city can enter into contract to do work on county property without the county being involved. That just doesn't seem, seems very counterintuitive to me. I just, I don't know how a government entity gets, you just jump in and go, yep, we're doing this on your road.
I think we, we had knowledge that they were going to be doing work on the road, right? And so, yeah, and, and again, it's kind of a catch 22. It's to facilitate the construction of that apartment complex. And it's just difficult.
Well, we're in the prime construction time here for these gentlemen to do the work. And safety is an issue. They can't, you can't build a road with traffic driving down a road and that's just how it is. As far as the, the, uh, nuts and bolts of getting this thing, the jurisdiction changed, I guess that's going to be up in the air until it's done. I don't even, you know, if we're going to rely on the state, this job won't get done this year. That's just how it is. I mean, it'll take forever to get this jurisdiction changed. I don't know. I would hate to see this project stop. It's already well underway and
Yeah, we just keep going into these.
Yeah.
We'll just end up, uh, eventually with more work and that. The city will get out of maintaining the road. Now, just to shut those short distance.
City consolation, I talked to one of the larger counties um, last week and asked them what their situation is, like dealing with cities taking out roads and it sounds like they have a very common experience that we are, so we're not helping different than others are. At least it takes some legislative changes. We started working on some, I was gonna get through.
Well, I sure can. I've been up there for a while. Is there any way to detour along out in the under adjoining land?
No, because of that big drop.
That's what they're filming in.
You need the bridge for the
It would take the, it would take that Jonas Boulevard is what it would take and you would have to have some sort of a small structure in place to navigate that ravine.
I think we'll back to the original motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion that, that we ask the city to come up with a better plan. And they either will or won't, then we can go from there.
If that gets a second, then just for context, you probably couldn't consider anything uh, for two more weeks. You probably wouldn't want to defer to John or I for that kind of this, uh, analysis. You'd want to wait till your next meeting. So with that in mind, you'd be off until March twenty fifth.
When did you anticipate starting this?
Sorry. So the city's requiring us to have a message board up on each side of the project prior to construction beginning for a week. So as soon as we get approval for the road closure, we'll go and get the signs made. So hopefully, best case scenario, tomorrow, we would have the sign up. We would begin construction a week from then to next Wednesday, which would be the sixteenth, I believe.
So immediately.
Any questions? Please call the city or please call you and not call John Bay.
I have, yes, I do have, uh, what we call door knockers that will go out, that have my direct contact information on them. For any questions or concerns with traffic control planning, they can contact myself or anyone in my office.
Could you?
I made my. No, no, sorry.
Could you, uh, build a road, uh, up to the upper end where the apartments are gonna be and go over to the, uh, what's that name, that place over there?
Are you saying, so where the northern area of Yale Street ends? Where, so we have a Yale Street going in between our, the apartments?
closures are at from here to here.
I don't know how.
Bring it over here. Catch twenty two as well.
It's ours.
So we are.
City.
Yeah.
They said they own.
Well, they wouldn't have, they would have surrendered to the very beginning, right?
You know, um, Chairman? So I, I think I heard John Bay said the state is, is, is suggesting that we not adhere any kind of a, you know, occupancy or, or any kind of a permit situation. That would, I guess, allow for a bond to be in place, I think, if there was a permit. But that's the only way. I don't know how else you ask for a bond apart from that. According to our rules.
Well, can, can you ask the city how they got a bond on property they don't own?
They probably didn't.
Then we're, yeah, then, then we're on liability.
Because of their risk. Well, yeah, so I mean, I think it's it's a, it's a county system road, so I think ultimately, despite what everybody else would say, ultimately, I would say that we should be out there making sure that things are up to snuff and, you know, because there's, there's a problem. It's under our jurisdiction. So I think ultimately, other people could get named as defendants, but we probably would too.
If we had an MOU in place, though, that would, that would give us a certain level of protection, I would think. If something like that happened.
They, they could agree to, um, hold us harmless, defend us and hold us harmless, maybe, yeah.
Or at least put that in motion. Remember what the motion, do you remember your motion there?
I believe my motion was to approve, approve closure of the road contingent upon the city of Spearfish entering into an agreement with the county confirming intent to take over jurisdiction of the road. And then if we want to add and hold harmless for any, yeah, and that, that there'd be some, some legalese that Mr. Outkill would probably need to smooth into that to make, make more sense, but basically hold the county harmless for any work or defects, yes.
Oh, second back. Okay, we have a moment in a second for your discussion. I have just one question on that. Does, does holding harmless, is that just for liability or does that also, would that also be including, uh, getting the road to its current condition?
Just liability.
Just liability.
Or how they argue about in court.
Yeah, I don't, if we put our position, ourselves in position of making sure the road is up to a certain standard, then we, we might be interjecting ourselves in a situation we don't want to be a part of.
Mainly, I want, I want to see Spearfish say, yes, we plan on taking that road over and county, you don't have any legal liability if something gets screwed up.
Right.
And we haven't been able to get the city of Spearfish to do anything on any other roads there. And that.
Any further discussion? Seeing now, all those in favor of the motion, of course, will say aye.
Aye.
All right, a pass.
Good luck.
Thank you. You have a good one. Okay, John, what else you got, sir?
We're just kind of having a norm, a normative to do.
No, I
Other deaths, that's, that's the way it's been in the past.
Um, I do have the, uh, we did lift our load limits down in the Spearfish and St. Ange and Whitewood areas, and we do intend, if, uh, current conditions continue, uh, lifting our load limits uh, the week of the fourteenth, uh, in the upper elevations as well. Play that by ear. And just so you guys know, maybe you've been by there and seen, but they did remove the Christianson Drive structure. The, the deck has gone. They did leave uh, some of the guardrail in place on the west side of Christianson Drive to aid in the, in the traffic control, so nobody drives into the creek. And we're to the point where I guess we're just gonna see what, when the actual uh, components are built. They're, they're on order to, to be built here in the near future and uh, we have a seasonal limitation on this bridge, if you remember, right? This is the one that we, after a certain date, we have to kind of close down uh, as an agreement with the local homeowner there, and then we're going to start back up in, at the end of the summer. So if we get all of our components in place, then we'll be able to, uh, hopefully have this bridge open by the end of the year. And that is all I have.
All right, any questions for John? Yep, we'll take a five minute break and then we'll get back to the schedule.
I'm.
All right, first order of business, underlining the zoning is a layout plan, remember?
So this is Mule Hill subdivision, and Kinzer Skies are here too, if you have questions, but this is just kind of a layout, they provided some preliminary road profiles already, as built are already done, so the roads are kind of done already. And this is where the Mule Hill Lodge is, so they're doing some lot line adjustments, plus also adding some lots in there. But this is just a very, you know, they haven't done preliminary yet, we're just to the layout, just to see if you have any overall questions or concerns, I believe you guys might see a vacation document coming up here for de-leasement, I don't know when that's scheduled or where it's at yet, but you're going to see, there's a old rideaway in there that runs right by this building. They're going to look to just move it over a little bit, so that it gets away from that building, kind of fixes that situation there. But they have to do a vacation document, or you can do, you know, plating, it's coming. Overall density requirements, it meets the density requirements, it's all park forest. Roads wise, he's got access in and out, a couple different directions. This is where the old Mattson Arena was, they own that as well, so just kind of moving some lot lines in there.
Both side ends are for recommendation.
They recommended approval, kind of looked at all the preliminary stuff, but they stopped using.
So that, it's not a public hearing, so it's up to the board for.
No, just more so if you had any concerns or questions coming up, you know, that they need to address before preliminary plating is what they were asking.
Do we need to do a motion then?
Yeah, you guys have usually just motioned to approve the layout, so then they can move forward to a preliminary.
Any further questions?
I have understanding of that. The park forest is eight, eight residents per forty, so that's five acres, correct?
Yep.
And it's sixty point nine acres.
I think that's.
Sixty-two acres.
Sixty-two.
Okay, so if we put twelve lots into sixty acres, how do we get four point eight acre average for a lot?
Well, it doesn't matter, you can, they can go anywhere down to two acres if they want. But you have to remember, there's existing lots that are already. So some of them are just moving lot lines, some of them are added.
So the twelve includes the existing lots?
Yes.
Okay, that's where I was confused.
Yeah.
Okay.
It, it should average a little over five.
Yeah.
Little over.
They're running six into twelve, so, okay.
Yeah.
Move to approve the layout plan.
Okay, can't move a motion in a second to approve the layout plan, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those are in favor of the motion, we'll say aye.
Aye.
Motion here. amended preliminary. Thanks to you guys.
Thank you. This one is an amended preliminary, as we have. White Hills Properties in Auburn Acres, what we've been asking them to do, if they make any changes, and this has started working really well, is they show you the changes in red, so basically the very top of this original preliminary is what's changing. Um, and they it's still, look at the density, they're just changing the lots up on the top side here. There's no changes to water or sewer.
This was the ones who are trying to do commercial property on.
Oh, I think originally, yeah, and they're just, they're going to be just small, I, I believe their intention is to do little tiny house type structures, maybe not tiny house isn't the right word, but smaller houses. It's been with, I mean, the requirements, so.
Most importantly, is that preliminary? Do they have a fire plan, excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Powderhouse Pass has a whole fire plan, yes, and weeds, and actually, I guess Dave's not here, but Dave said everything was looking really good at the planning and zoning with this one, yeah, but they're working on it and getting it, and it's looking pretty good, so.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Seeing none, all those are in favor of the motion, we'll say aye.
Aye.
All right, and this one is just a final plat, if you remember, you approved the preliminary a few months ago. This is Derek and Kim Sukstorf and the neighbors. And they are doing a lot line change, lot line change, but then at the time, when we were going through it with their structures, we found that they had a tiny house sitting on the same piece as their regular house. And so they opted to go ahead and go through the subdivision process instead, to break that house off, just for future, they didn't want to move, remove it, they wanted to keep it for their kids, so they owned enough acreage to do it, and then they also worked with the neighbors and called a lot line change, so you've already approved the preliminary, and this matches it, oops, fire plan is done, that was one thing we were waiting on.
We'll approve the final, that's good. Second. Okay, I have a motion in second to approve the final, I will consider any further discussion, seeing none, all those are in favor of the motion, we'll say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion can.
Now we have to wait until the final is done.
Yeah.
It's at nine fifteen.
Um, I think we'll try to get an answer, I just texted her, but I will get her.
Text them all. In the layout, there's nothing to sign for that one.
Thank you. No.
Sorry.
We got hung up a little bit earlier, but that was it. Got through that. You gentlemen here for the next one, the public area one?
Yeah.
Sometimes we get way behind, sometimes we just burn enough time.
Do you care if I pass out a couple things to you guys?
No, that's fine.
One of those is, like you guys read it, and there's people that have signed and stuff, but that's just showing you the other signatures, make sure there's one there.
Did you get one?
No. There's two, there's.
I thought you were going to pass it out.
So this is, this is actually for items in the public. Yeah, this is not.
Just showing you all the same. Do you have an actual one to get to right there?
You could have one too.
Go ahead and come on up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Hey, Glenn, hands around, nice. Actually, actually Pat appreciates the fact that you turned this out of it, because I was able to quit talking to him then. Here's some extras if you needed.
Okay.
Hello, thank you. Um, I, I put together a little spreadsheet, because it, things make sense to me a little bit more in spreadsheet form. Just looking back at the last five years, I kind of wanted to do that. Last year, we handled a total of eight hundred and five cases for six hundred and twenty-two clients. Obviously, a lot of our clients have multiple cases. Usually going on at the same time. We billed a total of two hundred and six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for the five hundred and forty-four cases we closed last year. Um, so that was pretty decent, in terms of outside court appointed attorneys. They billed three hundred and fifty-five thousand, a little over for two hundred and thirty-six cases, so it's significantly higher cost for the outside court appointed attorneys. I would note that one of those cases was the Drew Rogers case, and if you, which was a murder case, if you take that out, it goes down to two seventy-nine, almost three hundred thousand. The average cost to clients for our cases was four hundred and forty-two dollars. A case where the average cost for outside court appointed attorneys was a thousand five hundred and six dollars. If, if you take out the Drew Rogers, then it goes down to just about twelve hundred dollars. So I, I think it's fair to take those large cases out of the out of the actual total. Last year, in terms of cases handled, I had a hundred and ninety-four cases, primarily felonies for a hundred and fifty-four clients. Becky had two hundred and eight cases for a hundred and sixty-two clients, and Shad mostly ju, mostly misdemeanors, handled four hundred and three for three hundred and six clients, so, and it's we've kind of gotten back to the point, it used to be that when I first started, misdemeanors definitely outweighed felonies, then for a while felonies outweighed misdemeanors. And we're kind of back to misdemeanors are once again about even with the total number of felonies, so about the same number of felonies as misdemeanors total. Yeah, part of that is changes in the laws, I, I don't know what we'll see now with the new ingestion charge. I think a lot of our ingestion cases for methamphetamine, fentanyl, those types of cases usually also have a felony possession of controlled substance, so I would say when we just have ingestion charges, it's somewhat on the rarer side, so I don't know that we're going to see a whole lot of difference in terms of the felony caseload versus the misdemeanor caseload ultimately. In terms of our case types, we had two hundred and thirty-three felony cases last year that we were appointed to for six hundred and fifty-three charges. So, I mean, most, like I said, most felony cases, you're going to have more than one charge. Sometimes those include misdemeanor charges, but for the most part, it's usually multiple felonies. For misdemeanors, we had three hundred and seven new misdemeanor cases with six hundred and five charges on those. Uh, so far this year, state's attorney has opened up two hundred and eighty-seven criminal cases since the beginning of the year, and our office has been uh, we've opened a hundred and sixty-one cases so far, new cases this year. And obviously, a lot of the cases that the state has opened, we haven't even made initial appearances yet, they're usually about six weeks to two months out now, our court, court calendar's pretty full. So we're usually a couple of months out from getting new appointments. Uh, at the moment, we have a total caseload of two hundred and sixty cases for two hundred and one clients, so overall, we're doing, we're pretty much on track, I think. As you can see from the last five years, the numbers stay, I'll say relatively consistent, but what I would note is that it was really just last year, of the last five years, last year and twenty twenty, in which we had full, full staff for both years. Um, the other three years, we were minus staff for at least portions of the year and weren't able to take cases during at least a few months of each of those years. Uh, I, I would note, and it's it's, I'm, I'm not trying to to be negative towards prior administration in the state's attorney's office, but I would say that I think part of the reason our cost per case has gone down again, is because of Ms. Harvey being in the state's attorney's office, she's very reasonable, I think, overall. And I noticed that there are less cases that are charged out that could have been misdemeanors to begin with, but were in the past raised to felonies. Um, those types of things, so, and, and they defer a lot of cases that they don't feel are appropriate to bring, so I think it's helped in terms of the overall caseload of the court as well. But we still have a lot of crime in Lawrence County, I mean, and we're, it doesn't seem to be going anywhere except up realistically. Um, even with the stuff that they aren't pursuing, um, which maybe would have been pursued in the past. Um, the misdemeanor attorney, Jeff Erlinson is very good to work with as well, uh, makes our jobs easier, I think, just as defense counsel, whether it's our office working with them or, or outside counsel. Uh, and now they have Christie doing the the juvenile matters, and she's very reasonable and appropriate too, she defers a lot of things for juvenile cases that would have otherwise gone to the court. Uh, unfortunately, that might go away next year, because I don't know that they're going to have the funds for their diversion program through the teen court, uh, which will be a real shame, because Verla Little, uh, for those of you who know her, are the ones, she's been doing the diversion. And she does amazing with those kids, instead of them being on a probation status with a probationer. She is doing wonders in terms of supervising and them not having to go through an actual court proceeding and having something on their record, she does a great job, so hopeful they can find some additional funding, because they've been having funding through the state through a grant, but we'll, we'll kind of have to wait. Financials, you know, we've consistently been under budget even since before I came on board as director. The one thing I would note, just so that you all are aware, is we have a much larger need these days for use of interpreters. Um, it is shocking how much I've had to try to remember my Spanish. Uh, I have a minor in Spanish, but I really have not had to use it in a long time, and we've really been racking our brains on trying to figure out, uh, right now, we're using the, the court interpreter phone system primarily, it seems to be the most economic, um, in terms of that, uh, but it is I, I feel badly for poor Bev who speaks no Spanish, and sometimes they'll call in, and it's primarily Spanish, I did have a a case in which we had to find someone who spoke Mandarin, but it primarily Spanish, and they primarily speak very little English, to a point where Bev, when she answers the phone, or Molly, when she answers the phone, really struggles and goes just a minute, and hands it to, to Shad or myself, we at least have some basic Spanish skills, but anything above, anything about talking with clients about their actual case, we have to use the interpreter system.
I know someone, if I get her to retire, could probably help you out.
That, that would be fabulous, we would love to have an in-person person. Um, and Shad and I also have looked at, um, just trying to like, like I said, I have a minor, but that was a long time ago, gentlemen, and we didn't talk about And we didn't talk about legal terms. There is. And whether they're from Honduras or they're from, I mean, it's, it's crazy. But I did want to bring that to your attention, just so that you, when you see those bills, you understand. We, we take it, we don't take it lightly when we have to do that, but there are some situations we just can't get away from.
Public defender's office?
Yes.
Could you take some, if you had more staff, should you take some of those court-appointed attorneys off this chart?
Yes and no. So I, I would say we could still take some more off the chart. We have done, as you can see, we've drastically reduced when, especially like this last year in twenty-twenty-four, because we had a full caseload, we were able to really cut the number of cases that went outside. We took, we took all cases this year, and so we'll see what this does for twenty-twenty-five, Rick, and that's the reason I say I, I think we could. A lot of these cases that were closed in twenty-four were appointed in twenty-three. So those were at a time when we probably weren't taking cases because we didn't have a full staff. We are literally at about max in terms of what we can take at the moment. Some cases, we're never going to be able to take all the, all the, all the conflicts off because some cases, you've got five defendants that are jointly indicted. We can only take one of those. Abuse and neglect cases, there's going to be three or four attorneys at least on those cases, depending on how many fathers there are. We can only take one of those individuals, whether it's the children or it's one of the parents. So there's going to always be some level of outside court-appointed attorneys. I think, I'm, I'm hopeful, knock on wood, that this year is the year that we will really be able to see that reduce even more in terms of outside court-appointed attorneys. And we'll have a better idea in terms of how many of those cases we aren't taking now. So I, I would say towards the end of the year, I'll have a better idea on that. I'm not here asking for more staff at this point. If I saw a significant ability to reduce, I would. If we could get another attorney hired, that's, I mean, that's obviously the other big thing. But, but I, I think we'll have a better idea at the end of this year what those numbers really look like and whether I feel like it's more beneficial for the county to consider hiring another attorney, or whether really those that are getting them now are ones that we wouldn't be able to take anyway. Does that make sense?
Yes.
The only other thing I have, I have two other things. One is, you've all maybe heard about the statewide indigent public defender that was appointed this last year. I, I just want you guys to know, they're not taking cases from us. They're only taking cases from Pennington County and Minnehaha County Public Defender's Office currently, which is unfortunate because we have a case that we called to ask them to take. And they've rejected at this point because they're only taking Minnehaha and Pennington. And then the, the last thing I would say is we are open and willing, if you all decide that it's appropriate to move over to the sheriff's department.
We're going to have a meeting after our next commission meeting for a full discussion on that.
We're not, we're not, we're not packing our bags. I'm not making any presumptions. But I've said it for years now, since we knew there was going to be a new jail, that I would really appreciate that opportunity. And I welcome any questions anybody has on that.
Tight down there, so.
We are.
We look forward to having a discussion on it. Hopefully, we can help you out.
Yeah. Well, thank you. I appreciate your time unless anybody else has any other questions.
Yes. Rogers case, was that contracted out to a court?
Yes, we had represented the victim. And so we were very familiar with that relationship and would not have been able, because of the information we had, to represent the defendant. So, and, I mean, sometimes, I mean, those are, those are true conflicts that, just like having a, somebody that's got five different defendants that we can't get out of. So, yeah, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Scott, your ask of us today is, is what we would consider Irish from the public. We've reviewed it a little bit here. To begin with, I'll have you just introduce yourself and say your name and address for the record.
Scott McDonald, St. Ange, three sixteen Center Street. This is Tim Manningly, who owns the St. Ange Bar. Problem we've been having is these people, there's like two different groups. So I'm at that old gas or mechanic shop, and then people living over on the lot, and it's right next to our wellhead. And we, in the past, we've asked them to clean it up and get the cars out of there while worked for a while, but now all the cars are back. We don't know what these people do for a living, and it's just a nasty thing that's going on. And I know the sheriff's office has been down there several times, and I know we've seen people get arrested. But these people are dwelling there, and I'm on the water board. They have no water or sewer in that building or where they're at on the other lot.
Okay, well, Bruce looked into the legality of all of this as far as what, how we're involved, and we certainly would like to help you. But Bruce, if you want to just pass a statute along, so I'm just digesting this very quickly, but there's a statute, it's S D C L eight-two-nine that says each organized township, so St. Ange is organized, has the power. When the municipality with a population, well, maybe not with a population of fifty thousand or more, is within four miles, so it's not, that's the count, does it?
No.
Hold on one second. Because in that instance, you have the authority to regulate certain things. I'm gonna, I don't know if I got the right statutes. Can I, can you give me time to go up and find another statute?
Well, we can't take any action today.
We just wanted to bring it to your guys' attention to see if we can get some help. Yeah, we, we would greatly appreciate it. Do you have anything, Tim?
Could you state your name and address, please, as well, as for the record?
Tim Manningly, two twenty-four St. Ange Road, St. Ange, South Dakota. I own the St. Ange Bar, and, you know, I have stomach issues on never restricted bathroom. We're a community hub, our bar is. And that's fine. And they come in, they clean themselves up and stuff. But we also have a situation, which I have been to the sheriff's office before. Three gentlemen come over and they produce an order, a body order on clothing, and I have a gentleman that was in Iraq military, and he says they've been batching. I went to the sheriff's department, and I said, okay, how much of a public health hazard is it of people, and I'm not a drug person, I have no knowledge on all that stuff, fentanyl, all that stuff. Is there a residue health hazard to other people? Because he made reference to it. He said, I've been there. And which in turn, the, the sheriff's office that I went and talked to, said there's really not, you know, a health concern on that aspect. But it is something to be aware of, you know, and you know, when you have people that, you know, everybody's down and out, I wish them the best, and we want to help the people, but it's been an ongoing problem that we've had in St. Ange. And, you know, being able to have no sewer, no water on the bathroom between the buses or to, you know, get it out in public, it's not right.
All right, Bruce, did you find anything else?
I did. I found the statute I was looking for. So each organized township in the state has power. When an unincorporated town is, is within its limits of St. Ange, inside St. Ange, unincorporated, right? They have the authority, amongst other things, to regulate the depositing of garbage, ashes, oil, or any offensive matter which might endanger the health of its inhabitants, and then generally subsection four, to obey any nuisance found within its corporate limits. So what I'm saying is, I think the city or the township would have the authority to regulate those things and to work with the sheriff's office to enforce them. They don't have their own constabulary. They'd have to use the sheriff's office. So then there'd also be a question about whether the county could go in and regulate these things over them when they have the opportunity to do it themselves, if that makes sense. So for example, we don't go inside city limits of spirit fish and say, we're going to regulate garbage inside city limits of spirit fish. Following that. And so, I mean, they do have the authority, according to what I see here.
So do you have your county board?
Yes. And they taught us that they don't really have any teeth. You know, they don't have.
Well, let us, give us some time to digest this and see what we can report.
Yeah, we greatly would appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for your time.
Okay, we are half hour, nine fifteen. Next item is a public hearing. Amber, we'll let you get us going on this one, and then we'll have our hearing.
So we are, this is for Heather and Anderson and Chad Adams are both present. If you know, I mean, most of you guys know where the old substation property is on Kirk Road. They've been out there for a few years now, and basically, they're looking to utilize the property that was being utilized by Tyson Mining, where they have a bunch of storage and stuff in there. They had, they were kind of using it for a yard. Tyson Mining has moved their stuff out. It's, it's gone. So they would like to be able to put in the storage containers, two rows in that same area, industrial district. Storage units aren't allowed to use in that district, so we just did a development plan on it just because it was a change of use, basically, to what was there previous. Pretty much being used for the same thing, but instead of Tyson Mining doing it, the landlords want to do it. I mean, it's the same similar process. Roads-wise, they're all intact. You know, the driveways are already in. There's really nothing new with that. Trucks were already going in and out of there. There will be no utilities, sewer or water, to those containers, so it's just dry storage. Really, I, I couldn't really see a reason why it wouldn't work with what we had already approved down there previously. It's just instead of Tyson Mining.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll allow the public in the room or online to, to speak for or against this. If, if there is someone that would like to speak at this time, please state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone in the body of the room that would like to speak for or against this? Okay, I'll add online. One more time for anyone in the body of the room. Okay, we'll close the public hearing and offer to the board for their discussion or action. I assume planning and zoning was.
Seems like a good use and an easy, easy done with those mobile containers. I'll make the motion approved.
Second, okay, we'll motion in a second and further discussion.
I think the only way I talked about is we will do, we'll use your site plan that was in here. Let's just issue a basic building permit on it, because like the containers don't really have a building permit, but we just need to show your setback. So we'll just do a basic thirty-five dollar permit, just to show we did. I think that's easy enough. So you can stop by any time, but we already have the site plan and stuff, so.
All right, thanks, Chris.
You bet. Thank you, guys.
Is there any, any more items from the public? Chairman, I think Mr. Beagle, Jay Beagle, the middle school principal, Lee Deadwood, was going to come today and talk to you about their program that they have, membership, teammates' membership program. I suggest they be here between nine fifteen and nine thirty, but I don't see him. Well, if he comes in, we can reopen. I think we've cleared our schedule. Other than, is there any items from the commissioners at this time?
Yes, I do. Mr. Chairman. Questioning their online component for our meetings. It's been, it's always very frustrating to me when the technology is not working properly. And it would seem that every meeting, including the planning and zoning, we're held up beginning it because we were having technological problems. I'm wondering why we have to have an online component for all of these older meetings.
I don't think it's required by state law, and I don't remember that, that there was any legislative changes that would go into effect on July first. It's just a matter, I guess, providing that service to the public. I know a lot of us in town enjoy that. I don't think it's technically required. They can recall.
Possibly something to think about, huh?
So was it an ordinance from the county that we, we did that?
No, it started back in COVID.
Courtesy, I think.
So is it up to the individual committees whether that, they can have them, or was that a county commission action that requires them?
I don't recall taking action on it at any time.
No, I think it's, it's just that the county commission started it during COVID. Like another, number of governmental entities do in some fashion, maybe not the same way we do it. And we just kind of carry over. If the commission does it, then that seems like something that probably would apply, for example, to planning and zoning or some of these other boards, right? Especially to have a lot of public interest. We're just trying to carry it over for consistency's sake.
Is there something we know of that creates the hassle with it, or are we just kicking the can down the road? Or is there improvement to make it better and easier?
I, I don't know. I don't, it's just like a gremlin some days. It works fine. I mean, I can sit here some days and we can just watch it move on its own. You've seen that before, haven't you, Brenda? I'm not even touching the thing. I, I do know that there is operator error. When I bump it, you know, and it doesn't, it does not take much. But I, we, we've talked about having a standalone computer.
A separate dedicating machine would make a lot of difference.
That would sit up there. I mean, we can look into that, and I don't know if it helps or not, but I guess that would avoid me bumping it.
Mr. Beagle apologizes, but he had an emergency come up with a student, so he will not be here, but he said he'll get on the agenda a different day.
All right.
Okay. Yep. Thanks, Amber.
So we can, we can look at it. I mean, there's.
See what type of, what type of
Yeah, just to get in overlap.
It's, it's useful for, if, if a commissioner or someone's done as well, that wants to get in online, you know, that, that aspect is also there, but. And I think part of the viewing should be the audience, those that are testifying as well.
Sure.
If, if, if we're not going to change it totally. I think the general public needs, deserves the right to know who's talking in the audience.
Well, we do have a camera.
I know, but it's not a.
Right, it doesn't, it hasn't changed.
I can, I can switch it, but it's just a matter of more, seem like messing around you do with more problems. But I mean, I could probably do it right now fairly easily now, and.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes. And there it is.
The school board is dealing with the same thing, and they, and so the city of Lee has done the same thing. They've gone to an owl.
Did you do the owl? I was wondering about that.
It works really well. And so basically, if, if you're talking, the camera comes to you, it, like, does it automatically? So it just, so then you're not having to sit here and mess with it.
Like R two D two.
We've talked about that.
Well, checking to see what type of expense we're, we're talking here.
It would be a device, I think, that would sit on the table, and then it just goes to whoever's talking.
And it has a separate computer that's just connected to the owl, so it's like sits kind of off. It's not, doesn't have to be registered, but I know it's a separate system.
It's a definite bit, you know, plus for the community members looking at who's talking, moving around. At least worth the money.
One of the benefits of having the vote to meeting and the recording is that we do post them online. Greg does that after the meetings. And I know that there are people that do go back and look at those. It also helps Brenda with her minutes and it lessens the requirement for having to have the minutes in that timeframe. So it, there are, there are features that we notice.
It's a custom campaign item of transparency. And we get rid of that.
Well, let's just look into it and see if we can improve it without costing an arm and a leg.
We will. Yeah, all right. Anything else?
And I'll just add, you know, it's not that I'm against the transparency or against any of the benefits of it. It's just I'm, I have an issue with, with interrupting the meetings. And then also, if we're going to have it, it needs to work. Because if the public are planning on using it and then it's not working, then we're, we're creating a possible violation there.
Okay. Anyone else?
I would like the commission to consider adding the commission meeting and the planning and zoning together. Because they each have to take up the issues, planning and zoning at both entities. If we could do it all the same day. If it went too long, we could change it over to another time. But if it didn't, we could get it all done one day.
When I first started, and maybe other people remember it, there used to be joint planning and zoning and county commission meetings.
For certain, certain items or mining.
Yeah, well, for, I think for the other meetings, I think, they used to sit there and the county commission would watch planning and zoning take action. And then when they were done, then the county commission would. And I mean, at the time, I think, for whatever reason, they got tired of that or didn't like it, so they went away from it. I can't tell you exactly why, but it used to be done that way.
You know, way back in the day, I sat on EKG, ETJ, and there was, there was county and city, and then the ETJ kind of joined them together, and those got kind of complicated. That, yeah, it was said to see some of the commissioners falsely and things like that. It wasn't good. All right. Anything else?
I would also like to see us, I mentioned, you'd be knowing more about what's going, going on there. Everybody has to participate in Amber's planning and zoning here to commission. And they don't get the opportunity to go or be involved in the planning and zoning in a way. So answer everybody's questions and that. And I, I also, along with that, think that they had to go back to having commissioners selected in different areas rather than at large. And that we're getting, like most others are, our experience, we're darned close to it. And it's just, that's what the city council is for, for the city people.
I think it got brought up a year or a while back that we had a discussion, and it would be kind of a complicated way to split it up into districts.
You have to wait, I think, until the next census, I think, right?
I didn't, I forgot about.
You know, I think if you talk to people in Buick County, they'd like to get rid of their districts and have it at large. So plus, minus. I guess voting probably, it's up to them to keep it sorted out at this time.
The challenge with districts is they need to be equal in population. And that's difficult to do when most of our population is on the.
Okay, anything else? We will adjourn this and come together as the board of equalization.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
So moved.
So nine thirty?
Sorry. Okay, so let's hear the motion. We'll say, those who want to prepare. So those listening online will recess now for a little bit, and then we have a board of equalization.
Yep.
This is the STIP.
So we need to follow the meeting.
I've got two of them, so.
Approve the agenda.
Everybody got one?
There's two.
Okay, we'll call a meeting to order.
We all need to.
At nine thirty.
And we will. We need approval of our agenda.
What should I approve?
All seconded, we in this direction. All voters in favor of the motion will say aye.
And then now we need to sign the, sign the board of equalization oath.
Do you want me to read it? Hello?
You want to, Kim?
All right. This is the twenty twenty five Board of Equalization Oath. State of South Dakota, county of Lawrence. We, members of the Board of Equalization of Lawrence County in the state of South Dakota, for the year twenty twenty five, being first duly sworn. We pose and say that we will fairly and impartially perform the duties as a member of the Board of Equalization for the county and state. That we will endeavor to equalize the assessment of all real property within the county. That we will seek to place upon the books of the tax jurisdiction within the county. Any property that may have been omitted by error or neglect of the assessor or Board of Equalization. We will faithfully and impartially perform all other acts in joint nominee by law. To the end that all assessments within the above county may be complete, just and equal as between the property holders. That's our oath. And if you agree with it, you will sign it. I'll send this around.
You can say two. Just say one. Just do what others. It's like there's something that you sign to.
Recommit so. Right here is my. I've been on these all eight, by this board.
Give us some assignment.
Go on without, hold nonstop. It's just been one thing after the other.
Poor guys.
We have a great group to work with, and I thank you everyone for that, as well as your department.
All right, we are ready to move forward.
All right.
Right?
Just going to go with the order. Of course, those are upstairs. I know what they are.
Well, if you don't have them, what do you eat?
No, that's okay. I know what they are.
Tax exempt.
So it was the San Onge voluntary fire department and the.
Thank you.
Yeah, the Salvation Army. So they both went exempt this year, understandably. Those are the only new ones, only new exemptions. That was a STIP because we had to STIP them for the, the part of the year that they owned it.
Okay. There you go. This is a tax.
Do it separately?
Yes, we have Salvation Army going eighty-five percent tax exempt.
So moved.
Second, okay, we have a motion in the second for eighty-five percent on Salvation Army, open in script, so all voters in favor of the, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried.
And the San Onge voluntary fire department, a hundred percent.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion in second for a hundred percent on the San Onge fire department. All voters in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Go to the appeals list now. Is that for, for assistance?
In what order do you have?
I have it in as Black Hills Development starting.
Pardon?
I have Black Hills Development.
Yep, first one. So.
That is correct.
Oh, all right.
Mail it?
Yes.
Let's start with a weird one.
Why would we start?
So let's start, Brenda, with the parcel that ends in zero zero six zero seven. You could take one of these and pass them down. So these are two lots in Potterhouse Pass. You can see on the maps, there is a triangle piece of BLM right in the middle of the lot. Why they would even plot it out, I don't know. But this one's way worse than the next one. So I am recommending we lower, put this lot in our lowest land table in the whole county. So that would take the lot value from one hundred and ninety-four thousand down to twenty-two hundred dollars.
Internal setbacks and all kinds of things.
Twenty-five, twenty-five feet all the way around that triangle.
Yeah. Actually, I think it's ten off the BLM. It's twenty-five off the road.
I think it's twenty-five off the public.
Is it really? So until they acquire that piece of ground or they get a variance somehow, I don't see how you put else on that lot.
We require you to have some kind of a safe value.
I can't put it to zero, so I just picked the lowest land table that we have in the whole county and thought, I'll just throw it in there for now.
Motion due follow recommendation. Second.
Okay. Same deal, if you could, take one of those and pass them around.
I thought I touched planning and zoning and it is twenty-five foot off the street in ten, but if that's different, then we may need to.
Yeah.
I would, I would double check if she'd know the more current. So I know like a lot of the lots down in the canyon that are on Forest Service have twenty-five foot setbacks on all sides. But that may not be the case.
So this slot is a lot bigger, but it has the same, on the north part of it, you can see the BLM triangle kind of juts into the lot. But on one. But on one of these first single sheets that you have, not the big comp grid, Brett did draw the setbacks, what we assumed were the setbacks. And then she shows that even at its narrowest point, there's still sixty, sixty-six feet there. So they're arguing that the only place you could put a house on this lot is like up by the BLM triangle. But I mean, we went out and walked the lot, and to me, that southwest corner, it looks like you could probably put a house there. So on this one, I'm recommending, and on those, that comp grid, those two comps both have BLM touching their lots too. You can see the triangle on comp number one is on the north part of it, and then it's on the west side of comp number two. And both of those sold, one of them sold in twenty-two for one twenty-seven nine, and one sold in twenty-three for one eighty-five, and they've both been developed. So again, they're wanting a zero dollar assessed value, and I mean, based on those two other ones that have kind of a similar issue, I don't think I can do that. So I'm recommending just to adjust the lot the same way that those two comps are adjusted, because they did sell a little bit differently than the rest of Powderhouse. And if I do that, it takes the assessed value down to one hundred and forty-five thousand, forty dollars, so that would be my recommendation.
Follow the nomination. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second, follow recommendation, all those in favor of the motion will say aye?
Aye.
Mike, could you? Still their paperwork.
Those in there, bud.
Mr. Corwin's property is in the lost camp area. He has appealed the last two years. This is his third.
Thank you.
Oh, Brandon, can I have that here? Sorry.
We'll share.
I was telling you, I was telling you, I was everybody, I needed to share. Okay. And I have an extra one.
Only got all of that, thank you.
So with the comp grid, we have proven sales of similar houses. So we've left it at keeping it at an appeal and not stepping the value. And the only thing that Mr. Corwin asked me to do is just read his note to you guys. All right, we're Ken. All right, so taxes should not be increased now because of reduced government spending, tariffs, and possible recession, Mr. Corwin.
He's not contesting funding, Jim, is the, your appraisal work, he's just making a general statement about property taxes, right?
Yes, he just wanted me to go through with the appeal.
Recommendation?
So I recommend that there's no change.
No recommendation, no change.
Okay. Motion in the second. All those in favor of the motion will say aye?
Aye.
Proposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next one.
Connie DeBries, yep. So Connie was a mail-in, and she owns property in Lantern Estates. She sent a letter that said, receive the tax notice of sixty-two point four three percent increase to a value of fifty, to a value of fifty-nine thousand, seven ninety. This home is thirty years old now and paid thirty-six thousand new. It is a double Y, these homes do not go up in value, they go down. I don't think it would go for thirty thousand at auction. Maybe have an auctioneer look at it. Not, not sure if anyone has sold a similar home in Spearfish or Lawrence County recently we could go by. This is not a new home, not in the city limits, and not on a lot. So what I did is I actually pulled similar manufactured structures throughout Spearfish to determine that her value of fifty-nine thousand, seven ninety was a pretty darn fair assessment compared to, compared to the sales that we have of like property. And if you go through them, they're all on rented lots, they're all manufactured. They're average in fair and quality, one is good at the very end. All of them sold within a one-year period. I, I can't recommend a change on this.
Move the following recommendation, saga.
Okay, we have a motion to follow recommendation, all those in favor of the motion will say aye?
Aye.
Janet Gale.
There you go. This is kind of a similar situation, but this one is actually on its own lot. I still kind of prove value with property that were on rented lots. It's all out, it's in Mountain Shadows. All lots out there are worth about thirty thousand dollars. So if you were to add thirty thousand dollars to the sale prices, she'd be well under what people are paying for those properties.
And she owns the lot?
She does own the lot on this one. It says, this is a written appeal for assessment on said property, parcel three two seven four zero zero one four zero 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 two six zero 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 zero, twelve thirty, Snowy Peak Lane, Spearfish, South Dakota. She owns point two acres. Mountain Shadows, lot twenty-six, block fourteen, plat nineteen eighty, nineteen ninety-six, anyway. Assessment for a nineteen ninety PTRT twenty-eight by sixty-four, bought in two thousand and seven for twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars, has increased four hundred and thirty-one point eight four percent, a hundred and seven percent by the assessor. With age and condition, value is too high. A reconsideration would be appropriate. Well, as you can look on the comp grid, I have similar, again, similar structures. Most of them are out in the actual Mountain Shadows area. They're all manufactured, they're all in good and average condition. She has quite a large property of fifteen hundred and sixty square feet. The total with the land is a hundred and forty thousand. All the other properties without land, hundred and seventy, hundred and fifty-six, hundred and twenty-five, one forty-five, and one thirty-five. Again, I just can't, can't recommend a change.
I'm willing to follow recommendations.
Second by twenty-three to follow recommendation, all those in favor of the motion will say aye?
Aye.
Carolyn, Carolyn, Cindy?
All right. All right, so we're starting with eighteen ten, oh, sorry, yeah, eighteen ten. And actually, I'm going to, we'll discuss this, a little bit more to it. There you go. All right, there you go. This is, eighteen ten is actually basically the stairway to this building that's a subject property. So it's on the other, it's on the other street, Lee Street, and it's a hundred and sixty square feet. So it wasn't really any comparables that I had of any sales for a hundred and sixty square foot lot with two hundred and ninety-two square foot of stairway. So I put it with his other building because really, the only way to get to the second floor of six six nine Main is through the twenty-seven Lee Street building. They would sell together, otherwise it wouldn't sell by itself, so, all right. So we're going to be discussing the eighteen ten and the eighteen twenty at the same time, okay? So you can see that has a total value of two fifty-two seventy, if I combine both the values. The twenty-seven Lee is valued at thirty-one thousand for the lot and the two hundred and ninety-two square foot of building. And then the other building is valued at two twenty-one eighty with the lot. If you look at the sales, the first sale is actually two buildings that are one story, and their combined square footage is two thousand three hundred and thirty-two, which is a little more than the subject. Although, if you include the mezzanine, it's, it's pretty similar. It does have some basement in both, and that one sold in twenty twenty-four for nine hundred and fifteen thousand. The second sale is four thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight square feet, retail store, no basement. Sold in December of twenty-three for one point two million dollars. So we have a sale on Lee Street in twenty-two. The square footage of it is one thousand two hundred and fifty, which is close to the subject, no basement, and that's a little for five hundred thousand dollars. So I really can't recommend with the sales that I see here in Deadwood to lower his value.
Motion for follow recommendation.
Follow recommendation, all those in favor of the motion will say aye?
Aye.
Proposed, carry.
Brett, that's just for that eighteen hundred zero zero, right?
That'll be, if we could make the motion for both, really, they would sell together, so, yeah. All right. So next one. Okay, it's two ninety-ten. Thank you. So this is actually just a part of his lot, just no building whatsoever. Let's see, yeah, we could take this one.
It's further five.
All right, so he says, this is two parking spaces with utilities, means the land is not buildable and assessed too high for just parking spaces. It is adjusted down already for the fact that it is not a site. We have it at basically twenty-two dollars and eighty cents a square foot. The other three sales that I found in Deadwood that were compare, more comparable, I have two actually on the back of Main Street, and they are just for parking. And they do, so, and the per square foot value does include their hillside. I just basically the total square foot and divide it by the sale price. And I have forty-six dollars and thirty cents a square foot for the parking area in sale number one, and forty-seven dollars and eight cents for square foot. These are both, the one sale's in twenty-four, the first sale, the second one is in twenty-one. And actually, about half of that is hillside of that parking area in sale number two. Sale number three, sold in twenty-two, and that is by the hospital. And that's an empty lot, and that, of course, that would be less per square foot because of its location, and that's at twenty-six eighty-one, so I can't recommend, even if it is, parking's a premium in Deadwood, and even those little parking area in the back there is worth, you know, what other things sold for, so I'm recommending no change.
So you're confident that your least eighty-five percent is worth, was great? It seems low to me.
Well, I, I did account for the fact that it is a little unusual, you know, with the.
Easement going through it.
The easement there and the fact that it's off the highway. These other areas are off the alley, so on the, so the main street is right in front of it, these buildings right here, and then there's Main Street, and then, so they're in a little protected, you know, the parking for the employees and for the owner and.
That sale too is right beside the parking ramp, isn't it?
Yes.
That's the one behind the.
Yeah.
Oyster Bay or Fairmont.
Yeah, so, I mean, it may be a little low, but I, I don't think it's unreasonable, I guess, so.
Yeah.
I'm willing to follow recommendations. Second. Follow recommendation, all those in favor of the motion will say aye?
Aye.
Are we going, so is the stip the next one, the dash six eights? Under, or did you move that?
I have, yeah, I have.
There's six eights.
He's doing it.
Twelve hundred, twelve oh eight sixty-eight, yep.
Okay, all right. So this one is out on Matson Lane. This land is unbuildable due to the county's failure to grant a variance of twenty foot into highway commercial. When the state DOT approved, the value of this land should be eighty percent less. All right, so I did make, I, I did stip it down, and I'll tell you why, and just, it's not for the land. Here. Let me, I'll explain, but I do have a comp grid just because he didn't sign it, so I can't, there you go. All right. So I did go out to the property, and I see that, you know, we have, of course, the one building up that he has, and it's pretty much prepped for the next one. I mean, a lot of the stuff is in. I did lower the building a little bit to put it in line with other ones in the county, but the land, I kept the same, so the land's at one fourteen oh eight oh, and I kept that the same. I did lower the structure from two sixty-five, four fifty to two ten nine sixty, and basically just to get in line with other similar ones to equalize it, honestly. The sales, yeah. We have the one, sale number one is in Deadwood, sold in twenty twenty-three. There is no other place to build there, it's just going to be that one pole building. It's honestly almost the same square footage, six thousand square foot, and it sold for three ninety-nine. The next sale I have is in, is on Upper Valley Road, so it's not in the Deadwood area, but it sold in twenty-four, pole buildings, two thousand square feet on half an acre, built in nineteen, nineteen seventy-one, that sold for three fifty. And then the other ones I put into, just because that Legends Lane lot, literally, they just put in a camper on it, it's across from the subject, and that sold for ninety-nine thousand in twenty twenty-two, just kind of showing that, well, he, I mean, he bought the lot for one forty-five in two thousand and nineteen, and it's at a hundred and fourteen thousand right now. So I just don't think it's unbuildable, and I think it's worth what we have on it, at least. So I recommend no change.
Brett, is this the lot where he did get a variance and put sort of a warehouse building on? Then he came back in and wanted another warehouse building, but he didn't, wanted it a certain size, I think he had pre-ordered it, so it didn't fit. And, and then, so, this is one lot, right? So is he saying that the whole thing is unusable even though he has?
That, that's what it says on the, that's, well, actually, I do recommend a change on the building, but yes, he recommends, says that the land is worth eighty percent less.
The dirt, the dirt work was going to be too expensive, and he's got his own equipment, he's out there doing the move and the dirt work anyway, so.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna ask, did he in fact do some dirt work then to take off that hillside?
Well, everything is ready to put the building on top of it, as far as I can see from the site, I mean, the, oh, yeah.
So. Okay.
So I recommend, I guess, to go with the step to change the building value, but not the land. So from three seventy-nine, five thirty to three twenty-five oh four oh, is what I'm recommending.
Oh, what was that again, I'm sorry?
To go from three seventy-nine, five thirty to three twenty-five oh four oh. And that'd be just to get the pole building in line with other pole buildings in the county, as far as what we have them valued.
Most recent. Subject was higher than the one on Upper Valley Road. I'm willing to follow recommendation.
I have for a lack of a second. The motion? I can't make a motion, I don't know what I'd make, but.
I move that we leave the building value where it was, no more.
One second.
So no change?
You're recommending no change?
Okay.
Alright. We already did eighteen twenty with the other one, so, okay. Do we want to continue on with, get done with Arlen, Kerwin? Okay, because then we have just the Kerwin, Patrick and Maverick Black Hills, so. We'll come back to person. Alright. Yeah.
You say it wouldn't last very much longer, spread, as you can taste the oil, it's a little old. That one's probably been in there for year and a half or better, yeah.
Oh, you don't need that one, good, okay. Well, you might need one more. There you go. Alright, so this is six-three-seven Maine. Alright, this is an old building with a facade that is the same as the Bullock Hotel and we are unable to improve it. It is not handicap accessible and it is overvalued with these conditions still present. And this was as with the other one, basically just a market adjustment, we put up Deadwood Commercial about five percent. So it increased about eighteen thousand dollars. Six-three-seven Maine. It's a two-story building, eighteen ninety-five, it has forty-six hundred square foot. It, it's a retail store with apartments above it and it does have a basement, but it's unfinished. And right now it's valued at four hundred and thirty thousand eight hundred and fifty. A lot of these sales are going to be the same. The first sale is the one sale I already discussed, which was the two buildings that have a total square footage of two thousand three hundred and thirty-two, which is less than the subject. It is a retail store in the bottom and it does have a basement, about four hundred and four square foot, which sold for nine hundred and fifteen thousand in twenty twenty-four. Then we have the twenty twenty-three sale of one point two million of a really pretty close to it, actually, forty-seven ninety-eight on square footage with retail on the bottom, it's storage on the top and no basement, that's all for one point two. And I did have one in twenty-three as sale, that's number three, which was for one point two. That is a little bit bigger, but has about, does have a basement, it's a retail store, similar to the subject. But that sold for one point two million in twenty-three. And these are all around the same age, all eighteen hundred buildings. So I'm recommending no change, just from the sales in the area. One more. On the objection, it says the assessed value increased twenty-two percent and is fifty-five percent higher than my property at six-six-nine Maine that I'm also disputing on increase and is six percent higher than my location of six thirty-seven Main Street that I'm also disputing the increase. Also with the facade is unable to be updated, decreasing the building value. The increased value, there was, this one did increase a lot more this year compared to the other ones. It had it had some renovation work that was done, that we put new growth on. There was functional on it that we took off or structured, which it didn't seem to have that problem anymore. And then plus the market increase, so that was the twenty-two percent it added up to, just. So this actually sold in December of twenty-three for one point two million dollars. We have four hundred fifty-seven seven ninety on it. And then I use a lot of the same comps, I guess, showing that, you know, twenty twenty-four, we have sales of nine hundred and fifteen thousand for a building that's smaller and is same type of use, retail store. Number three, same thing, retail store, sold in twenty-three. It is a little bit bigger with the finished basement, but it sold for one point two million dollars. So I'm recommending no change on this one.
Follow recommendation, or those who agree with the motion will say aye.
Aye.
The change in the facade, it borrows the value that much compared to those others?
They're not allowed by, it's a preservation, are they?
They're not allowed by a stark preservation?
They all have the same thing on them. They're all
Why is this one so low?
Well, it was actually brought up twenty-two percent. So I don't, I don't know, I'd have to yeah. I can take a look at it.
It looks like, I'll bring back person. Eighteen seven hundred zero zero five oh four one fifty-one. It's kind of in the middle of that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so the parishments, they have lots in the Alice Florence Naomi East Boulder Canyon area. If you guys need a general map, I did have that, but maybe you're familiar with the area. Okay, so they've appealed the value on their lot. And we've had just, I put every sale in there that we've had and they've all been over our assessed value. They're assessed at one twelve on this property that's off of James Drive. It is one of the most buildable lots up there. Has a nice amount of land that you can, you can put your, if you wanted to build an improvement, it could be to the front, to the middle, to the back. So I recommend that there's no change due to the fact that we've had sales on land and one of them just being in the less desirable neighborhood across Boulder Canyon or Highway fourteen A for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Going to the motel? Yeah, okay.
This is
Alright, so this one was actually appealed, they hired a company to do it. And I sent them an email and a grid and tried to, anyway. As far as I know, they, they never responded to me, so they also appealed this last year. And we had an additional sale that come up in Lead at the Blackstone Lodge LLC sold for three point one million dollars. And it is a smaller and the quality of the hotel is less. And it sold for, right now we have the Hampton Inn assessed at three million forty-nine eight fifty. And I did also assess value per square foot, it's at about fifty-five dollars a square foot. The Blackstone Lodge sold at around ninety-one dollars, ninety-one dollars a square foot, they're built around the same time. The comparable sale number two was also a twenty twenty-four sale. It did have apartments and used to have a restaurant, now it's the Boys and Girls Club. But it sold for seven hundred thousand, which was around seventy-two dollars and forty-six cents a square foot, including the basement. So I wanted to give you, give you an idea of what things are selling for in Lead as far as commercial. I also did have a hotel cell in twenty-two, that's comparable number three. And that is a five thousand square foot, two-story motel built in nineteen twelve that sold for one point one million dollars and that came out, it does, it's a good quality. And it's over on one thirty-five a square foot. The the old, not retirement home, but you know what I mean, the
Golden Ridge.
Yeah, Golden Ridge, at two hundred Montana, which now is for sale for two, it's listed for two million dollars, but it sold for nine hundred and seventy in twenty-three. That's around fifteen thousand square foot for apartments and it sold for around sixty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents square, a square foot. So I'm recommending no change. I don't think they're overvalued.
They offer, they never did offer a reason about it, just too high?
Yeah, just too high. And they said it was cost, income and sales, it was all too high by all those approaches, but and I asked for numbers so I could do their income, never, never got back to me.
Which is not uncommon, is it?
Well, when you, not when you have another company appealing for you, yeah.
Most follow recommendation, no change.
So the next one is that Carol Bueller and she will be coming in on the twenty-second.
Alright.
She, yep, and then Russell Donovan will be here around eleven.
Today?
Yep. So will be Selcone, Molly, in town.
So Molly Selcone came in. They live up on Timberline Road, which is Pine Oaks subdivision. That is between Higgins Gulch and Wild Turkey west of Spear Beach. Access is off of Hillsview Road. It's a big loop. We call the whip and loop one back, so Timberline Road is basically one road, that's just a loop. Anyway, these folks own the parcel that they live on and then they own the parcel next to it. And that is what they're appealing, which is Lot fourteen. They live on Lot fifteen, I believe. They are four point three four acres. This bare parcel that they own next to them, she told me that they bought it years ago, just as kind of a supplement a lot, so nobody would build next to them, the kids used to play over there. They've talked about replanting both lots into one, they may do that at this point. Their assessed value is one sixty-three four hundred. Only included in its grid is sales strictly within Pine Oaks subdivision, because I have had several, even though a couple of them are from twenty-two. The first two best comparables are actually twenty twenty-two sales. But if you look at, they're assessed at one sixty-three four hundred on the subject property. Sale number one sold in twelve of twenty-one for a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Sale number two, with a couple of lots down, sold in September of twenty-two for two hundred thousand. They have similar topography, they have similar access, similar utility issues, well issues. One of those lots, sale number two is currently being built on. I did include a lot that sold in twenty twenty-three, but that's down off of Hillsview Road, so it's a little bit different access, right? That sold for one ninety, still substantially more than what
They're building on that one right now.
Okay, yeah. And I have that, that they're building a new residence. The last one actually is my newest sale. And that actually is right behind the subject property. What's between them is Timberline Road. If you will look at your map I have the subject property outlined in blue. I had that last sale, which is my most recent sale from twenty twenty-four for a hundred and fifty-five right behind them. Yes, it is for the last, yes, it is four acres. It's seven point eight seven point eight zero acres, where the subject is four point three four acres. But if you look at my last map which is the topography lines. That lot that just sold on a topography map, the spacing between those contour lines indicates the steepness of the terrain. The closer the lines, the steeper the slope, the wider the lines, the gentler the slope, the more buildable area. So if you look at that lot behind them, which sold for a little bit less, not much, sixteen thousand dollars, I believe. They don't have a great buildable area in there. I could tell, Rick, you're familiar with that lot. So I recommend no change to their value. She said they were not coming. I felt like they just wanted to indicate that they felt like values were just getting really high.
Move to follow recommendation. Second.
So I didn't get as fancy on my grid as everybody else, so I apologize. This is in the tract Y subdivision, which is located off of Oak Road in Whitewood between Whitewood Forest Acres and the city of Whitewood. New gated subdivision. The gentleman says that the assessed value increased three hundred and sixty-four percent on our property and it did in twenty twenty-two and it was platted. I used the same land table as I had in the Whitewood Forest Acres subdivision, because I had no sales at that time. And then in twenty twenty-three, they did start to sell well above the assessed value, of course. Then he continues on to say it is absolutely insane for a one-year increase on an undeveloped piece of land. There hasn't been any improvements on the lot to warrant an increase and raise the value like that. In all my years of owning property and living in eight different counties in North Dakota over my lifetime, the assessed value has never been even close to the selling price or purchase, selling or purchase price. Lot twelve in the development just sold for around ninety-eight thousand. The current assessed value is extremely excessive. If some increases warranted, use a tiered approach over the years. If you look at the sales that I have on the grid the, the subject is valued at a hundred and fifty-two thousand six hundred dollars. The first comparable is his own purchase of the lot in question at a hundred and sixty The first comparable is his own purchase of the lot in question at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I had twelve sales in this neighborhood this year. Um, the second is a little bit bigger than his and it sold for a hundred and ninety-five. The third sale is two point four seven acres. It sold for a hundred and seventy. The fourth is a two point eight three uh, acre lot that sold for uh, one ninety-five. And then the last one is two acres at a hundred and eighty thousand. With those sales in mind, including his own, I recommend no change.
Move with all recommendation.
Um, Bonnie Sodell actually went and did a site visit and there were many things that needed to be uh, fixed. She's in the midst of renovating. One bathroom is inoperable. Another one is only half an op, there's a lot of stuff, no floor covering. So I recommended, and also the condition of the mobile home was worse than what we had it in us. So I recommended more depreciation and a functional for some of the things that need to be repaired. Uh, so that moved the structure from sixty-two, three forty to forty-eight, seven twenty. That's what I recommend. And then we'll go back in the fall when, uh, things are repaired and, and take that off.
Most follow recommendation.
Yes, yeah, the appointment, yeah. So now we have the black, our four bears in the hills.
You got eleven fairways, condominium parts, same thing. And all the rest.
It's part of it, yeah. So they're all, all the same owner. Well, he said he had authority to sign for them, make sure.
Your eleven fairways?
Yeah.
So the stips got mixed in with the appeal, so I had to kind of go between these. Okay. Oh, right. I once heard somebody from the Forest Service who works for the Forest Service say that one tree won't kill, or one ream of paper won't kill one tree. All right. Okay, the first one, uh, is the eleventh fairways condominium. Um, this one was an administrative correction. The land was still on the mother parcel and they've all been divided out to six, uh, individual parcels. So, uh, we have gone, we've taken the land, uh, amount away. It was one sixty-five is down to zero, but that's because it no longer exists. It's now all divided by, uh, six in the six individual condominiums in lieu of one.
Okay, so administrative correction.
Administrative correction.
Follow recommendation and approve the correction.
Okay, so, uh, nineteen hundred eighty. Okay, this one, uh, we did a physical review of the lot and I do recommend a lot adjustment to, due to the drainage issues that we found on the lot. The, um, the land amount previously was two twenty-five and we are going down to one fifty. One hundred and fifty thousand.
Motion to follow recommendation. Second.
Okay, so actually this one is three lots and I put them all on the same grid. And this is due to the fact that they're all in the north, um, section of Apple Springs. There are the larger lots. And they're all selling for higher prices. Um, they have access to, a lot of them have access to the Forest Service.
Thank you.
And Brenda, you need it for?
Please.
All of these lots, um, except for the one that we just helped with the drainage, which a lot, a lot of them are running right into that lot. So, but these lots are very buildable, uh, very desirable. They have, um, had sales for three hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and forty-four thousand and one hundred thousand. That is a smaller lot in the cul-de-sac. Um, we have the subject of lot uh, ten, lot thirty and lot sixty are up against these. And they are valid, valued at two twenty-five, two fifty-nine, two forty, seven fifty. So they run right in with all of the comparable lots that are right, they're just right next to each other. And so I'm recommending no change on these lots.
Motion to follow recommendation.
All right. Excuse me, Russell Donovan is here, so I don't know if we want to, ten thirty, but Donovan is here?
Yes.
That, that.
He has an appointment.
Has an appointment and he is here, yeah.
All right, let's go back to that.
Okay.
So we on the first page on the top.
Can you come on up?
No, it's on the first page.
Please skip your name and address through the record.
Hey, so my name is Russell Donovan. I live at, uh, five one five West Main Street, Lead. That's not the property question. So my first concern was that, um, I knew my property taxes would go up this year because it goes up every year. But I didn't expect eighty-eight percent up this year. I think excessive, and maybe the board can do something to, to recommend that they only go up a certain percentage per year at the time. So, uh, I was provided with seven comps. Okay, the, the first of the seven comps, um, I don't think it was a fair, uh, comp. It's kind of out of the, out of this perspective comps. Um, I have a few notes on it, so it's not a good comparison. It is anom, it's an anomaly. You coupled with outside the recommend, the recommended twenty-five percent range to give a good comp. It is also over one mile away. Also a recommendation to provide a good comp. It has no covenants, okay? It's a flat lot. All areas are buildable, easy accessible by Boulder Canyon Road in an established subdivision. There's a temporary building container that was present during the sale of that property. The container on a lot's been used for storage. Okay, six and seven comps, six and seven comps, I believe, are not, uh, in scope, because they are respectively, two and three years out. So I don't think that reflect the, the standard prices are going, are going rated currently. So that leaves, um, comps two through five, okay? If you take the average sale price of those comps and you break it down into the acreage they sell, the, the second comp is a forty, forty-two thousand dollar, well, forty, forty-two, four per acre. The second one is twenty-two, five per acre. And the third one is thirty-five thousand per acre. Fifth one is thirty-four thousand per acre. Also have uh, my notes that the members of the board would like to look at my notes. Okay, if you take the average per acre for those fu, two through five comps that I feel are important, that would make the average price per acre at thirty-three, four, seven, five. Okay, if you took that times my property size, that would make my value at eighty-nine, seven, one, three. If you look at the bottom part of my sheet, you'll see that the sale prices there are currently in progress right now. And the sale prices they have is, are, the first one is about thirty-seven, the middle one is sixty-four thousand, next, next one down is thirty-five thousand. Okay, they're currently on the market right now. The second, the second property has had to reduce because they can't sell. They've reduced it twenty-five thousand from there and they, and those properties still would not sold. So my concern was that what I've been evaluated from sixty-three this year to a hundred and seventeen next year is not a fair comparison.
And also Christine needs to come up and explain, sure, the values left, sales. Yeah. So, um, we're always trying to be according to, uh, the South Dakota law, which is supposed to be at one hundred percent of market, of true and fair value. Um, uh, full value, I'm sorry. Uh, so our, Alice Florence Naomi has taken off in the last couple of years. Uh, land sales have been high. And, um, but the surrounding areas have, that are similar, um, that have, uh, more dense forest and their lots um, are, are desirable now and we're seeing that trend continue. And I believe that these sales here that we have show that people were willing to pay the money for these lots. We have, um, and just our first acres, we've moved it to one hundred thousand to be in line with these sales. Uh, all the secondary is, uh, much less. Okay, and then, so we did use the comparable just across the street, uh, from the end of James Drive. So, um, it's a very small map in the upper corner. I apologize, but, um, I do, oh, that's in the first one. Would that help you if I pull that map out?
Yes, please. One thing I might add that to for consideration is also there's a significant easement road that goes through my property, the only flat part of my property. My property is very slanted and it's going to require a lot of excavation in order to build there. Plus it has only flat spot is there as an easement through there.
And I can describe some, just some things about the land as well, because I did walk the property after he gave me permission. Okay, so, uh, your Alice Florence Naomi map, this is your, uh, northern section and your southern and you have their, uh, US Highway fourteen A. And comp number one is right here across the way and, uh, Radio Tower, okay, on Star Quilt. Okay, so it's not that far when James Drive is here and that's the end, his lot is up here, okay? So lots are going this high. Um, there are also, I've also noted down in here. So we've talked about the comparables. Uh, we have him assessed at one seventeen, but we've stepped him down to one oh six, if you see on your stipulation. And I've taken away the land adjustment for the right of way. And, um, let's see, so. Okay, we also have another one that's for sale on Warren Loop, um, that's this year for sale at, um, three hundred and fifty-five thousand. So the trend is still out there. Just letting you know that. Um, um, when it comes down to his land, I do have these for you guys. He does have a steep drop-off, but we have, so the first set of photos are of his lot and then I put the, okay, thank you. I put the, uh, just the breakdown of the, the land for the, um, the other comparable that's not a sale, but it's how, um, it has been cleared. And the, uh, benches, as they're called, or intervals on the maps have been also cleared away and it's buildable now, so I'm sharing that as well. It is, um, something that can be built on and you still have, uh, all the trees around you to keep the privacy from the other subdivision.
Tell me about these.
So this one, if you see on the first and second page of that picture packet, you'll have a street sign about right here and the next one's a little more blown up. And you'll make a hard left and follow along the edge of the road over to the other property.
Rick, there's a driveway that goes to the neighbor's property that runs parallel to the road.
Only way into the property, is through my property. Right, which if you build a house, there was going to be probably thirty yards from my front door. Maybe forty, I could squeeze it back farther. So depending on what their habits are, I could be cars driving through there on a regular basis.
And you're right adjacent to the Boulder Canyon or Boulder Park subdivision, right, you back up.
It's, yeah, Boulder Canyon, I, I butt up against their property line down there.
There's no access out of there?
No. And all those properties have well water and sewage.
Yeah, they're, they're completely down there, but you're right against them, you're right there.
This comparable lot that's, uh, in the packet of pictures that has been cleared is, um, about two south of that on James Drive.
I, I didn't see any, um, in the, in the notes, ma'am, of whether they, the other, the other comps had road districts assigned to them, is that? I know probably all the ones in the Florence and the only property, but I don't know about the other one across the street.
Um, that the auditor has the road districts.
I think Three Sisters says.
Three Sisters Road District.
Which any of them say Naomi or Florence or Alice or.
Probably all the same road district, yeah. I was pretty sure they were in there.
I think the one across the street is in Road District. Don't think so.
Star Quilt?
Star Quilt. I know, I know they don't have covenants, according to the sales, they didn't have any covenants over there, where we have covenants. So.
Well, I do numbers on comparable two. That forty-two, four thousand an acre comes out, if you did the same acreage as yours, it'd be one thirteen, four eighty. Comparable four at the thirty-five thousand would be ninety-three, eight, ninety-three thousand, eight hundred. So I don't know that we're out of the ballpark, especially at the one oh six, the one that she's, she's about stepping down to. So I don't know that we're out of the ballpark, especially at the one oh six, the one that she's, she's talking about stepping down to.
Yeah, so comp three is a twenty acre lot, which I think would be.
That's why I put that out, because you, you're buying a lot and then you're buying, you're buying a building site and you buy a bunch of acres. And some of it might be like this and some of it might be something else.
When I did my average, I left those in there, but.
Star Quilt is not in our district, but the Florence is in the Three Sisters.
I think it's for one oh six, follow recommendation of one oh six.
One oh six, seven, twenty?
Okay, what was your motion again? Follow the recommendation of one oh six, seven, twenty for an assessed value. Alright, so I'm motioning to take the second by getting all those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
I don't know why they did that driveway, that's just kind of strange, unless there's a big drop off in that corner, that adjacent law. Let's find you.
Alright.
Back to four bears.
Anyone need a break? What I did?
Nope, we stopped after the packet, we're on zero six, zero twenty. Okay, so that is a step. Alright, so after we've physically reviewed the lot, we're recommending a lot adjustment to lower the value. And we're going from ninety down to sixty thousand, three hundred. This is also in an area where smaller lots are and it just happens to be one next to a larger lot by Mike, by very small and very and so I should have probably had a lot adjustment on there along with the others down this side of the road and not this side of the road is how that looks. So I'm recommending that we lower the value to be in line with the properties to the right of the property. I may have a Miles Cooper for an appeal. You can see. But I don't have a map, so I apologize.
What, what is the assessed value currently?
Ninety thousand.
And what is it, what is the step?
Uh, sixty thousand, three hundred.
Six, zero?
Six, zero.
Both follow recommendation.
Second.
Already got one in a second. Oh, I see.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay.
Sure. Let me go. Caffeine, what I need, the other, the rest of it, sugar.
About one hundred ten, that would you? Oh, okay, so that one's not a step, I accidentally wrote that, I apologize. That would be why I looked confused. Okay.
Sure, we on?
We are on.
One hundred dash ten.
Yes. There's two for you guys.
You.
So this is around the cul-de-sac off of Miles Cooper, off of this last stipulation was down the street. But this is now part of the larger lots that we don't have the the lot adjustment on. These, these properties are all larger, they're building houses on them, not townhouses. So the other ones were kind of a townhouse sized lot. And so that is why we did not step this one, we want it to remain as, and it's assessed at ninety-one thousand. And you have one across the cul-de-sac for one hundred thousand that sold in twenty twenty-four, one hundred and seventy-nine in twenty twenty-four, one fifty-four in twenty twenty-four, one seventy-five in twenty twenty-two. Now these, these lots are up on Wild Burger. Okay, this, the two eighty-five is a multi parcel sale with the one just next to it. So just so you know that the last two, I do have a line at the top that divides them off, but it's probably hard to see when it's not on the computer screen. Okay, so my comp grid goes one through four, number five and six are these, these two sold at one hundred, but the multi parcel is part of that two eighty-five, so it sold again.
Recommendation?
I recommend no change on this slide.
Both to follow recommendation.
This one has a better map and you have your own map, but the one in blue is the subject. And then this is part of the Apple Springs neighborhood belongs to. Oh, I just gave you my map. Sorry, I just realized I did that, okay. So what this map shows is your sales from, your green is in twenty twenty-two, your purple's in twenty twenty-three and your yellow's in twenty twenty-four, which is your assessment period now. And we have ninety thousand on that lot, we already have a lot adjustment for its location. And so therefore we recommend not, no change. Because lots are selling most recently, one seventy-one, one fifty-four, one seventy-nine, one eighty-nine, one eighty-nine.
You have to look forward to that.
I do mention.
So yeah, hold on a second, yes, I'm gonna be asking for forgiveness. Okay, so we are on oh four oh ninety. Okay, so I don't have a picture of that. So I apologize, I had three last, well, one very last minute thirty appeals that we worked on and then I had two that were not happy with their steps and wanted more work done. So I have I'm looking for a map for you. I'll have done an amazing job. There's, oh, I do have it, it's right here. Okay. So with this one. Mike's been very fair working with me, so this has been good, okay. So if y'all share this, I apologize, you have number nine, which is on his list. And it's this diamond pattern key. Okay. So. This is four hundred, zero, nine, zero. Yes, it is, yes. So Mike said that this lot was purchased back to provide access to acres below next to golf hole number eighteen. This being replatted and should be part of the agriculture, unfortunately in twenty twenty-four it was not replatted. So once again, we have to look at its full value, should he want to not replat it, it's still a very nice lot to build upon. It's flat, has good drainage towards the hole eighteen. Maybe it's not good for hole eighteen, but, but it has very buildable space. I am recommending no change and it's assessed at, I have that. It's assessed at one hundred and fifty thousand.
Second.
Second, if I sleep for no change, all those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye. Then he could buy that back through the access off the end there.
So if he gets that done in twenty-five, we can have it done for twenty-six for him. Okay, so now we're on two, two hundred. Fifteen hundred, two.
Fifteen hundred and nine?
Fifteen hundred, two hundred.
Two hundred.
Just halfway in the middle of the page, which is, there you go. This is the general area and in blue is the subject. This lot has no issues with it as we've been past it and studied it. The two houses next to it are very similar lots, it's very buildable. We're recommending no change, we still have our same comps around the same size of a third of an acre. I have a couple of half, almost half acres, but they've sold for one seventy-nine, one fifty-four, one seventy-nine, one eighty-nine, one eighty-five, eighty-nine, sorry. And we have one fifty on it, so.
Can you share what his problem is with your valuation?
So there's, there's a little extra history here, so if you see and I, there's a lot next to it and has a dirt road kind of carved into it. That is lot two oh one, now I'll come up in a little bit. He, he may have thought that both of these are undesirable because they're next to their utility water lot, but they have a garage on, a very nice one that goes up, as you can see, there's like a dwelling and then there's a garage just over here. And they could drive up this way, but the, over time, someone has driven this way to that asphalt driveway across these two lots. Neither of these lots have any kind of easement on them, they are full lots that can be built on. So when we're working on two hundred right now, is, I'm recommending no change because nobody's even driven on that one to use access for that water utility garage.
Yeah, move the follow recommendation. The water fit matches the house is sitting, that looks very nice.
Yeah, from the aerial, it looks really nice.
Yeah. Fifteen dollars with favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Nine hundred sixty. Okay, so this is now back to a step. So this one, we physically reviewed the lot and I recommend adding a lot adjustment to lower the value. Was at one fifty and we brought it down to one twenty. Okay, and also. Get that for you, let's see. Oh, six oh twenty, no, oh, six oh zero, zero, where'd you go? Okay, so this one, he just says it's not a very desirable lot. And his perspective on putting these lots into appeal were because he's the developer. He's not a sales or has a builder building on it currently. So he was looking for that little bit of reprieve since his lots are not selling, but the lots that other developers or contractors are selling. So except for I did find that three, three of them right at the top of Wild Burger are his, that he did sell. So he did have sales in twenty twenty-four, but that's, that was his and he just said that this is not a very desirable lot, but they're just across the street from the golf course. They're on Apple Springs Boulevard and they're very accessible, very easy to use.
I agree.
What adjustment did you come up with?
We did a point eight, so twenty percent.
Do you have the notation as to why that one would be?
So I wrote, the lot already is adjusted for lot is already adjusted for location, frontage will be on Wild Burger with views, or yes, with views of the golf course to the back. Okay, so.
What lot number is this?
This is six, block nine. And it has a partner of going south on it, they have a lot adjustment, okay? So they have a lot adjustment.
Is that one up by the corner to the west? Nine hundred six hundred, I think, yeah.
They are smaller than the other ones that go up.
They're still buildings.
Sorry, and it's on.
It, it's almost half an acre that backs up to the golf course.
I don't see it.
Four point six, or point four six.
I'll second that. Kate, we have a motion from, second, if there's enough for motion.
Okay.
All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Didn't pass anything, ask.
This is three hundred dash zero thirty.
Lot three, block thirteen, okay. Okay, so these, so we'll go, so if you have, you have block thirteen, lot thirty, forty, fifty, sixty and eighty. So these next five steps, alright, one, two, three, four, five. This is a administrative correction. They abandoned plat to add acreage to the Meadow and Wildlife Preserve is the explanation. So they are not, they are part of the Apple Springs Golf Course slash Preserve area. So we're just making a correction to be in line with the replat.
About building sites.
They're not building sites anymore, thank you. It goes thirty, forty, fifty, sixty and eighty, correct? Thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, eighty. Yes, yes, this one is, yes.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the administrative change.
Second. Second by getting, all those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
You guys want to. You guys will see our.
That'll be all the. All the mailings will be done then.
Thank you.
Here's some for you.
Thank you.
Yep, all right. So here's the map with the neighborhood and the sales are highlighted in color. So. Good. Hang on, no.
There's an issue. Heather almost just gave one map, but the whole thing was all of them noted.
Right. Okay, so for this lot. We're not recommending any change to it. He had thought it was a lot that was removed to lessen density. So when you look at the map, there's two little like pork chop shaped ones on either side of it. So it may be intended that all three of those will be replatted into two. We don't know, but that was kind of his discussion with me. So, but it was not replatted in 2024, so it still existed. It still could have sold. It's actually the nicest lot to build on. It's very flat, comes right off of Wild Burger. And then it does have a little bit of a view over those two lots that go downhill from it. Right, so it's assessed at 150. And the comparables off of Wild Burger are 179, 154, 179. And then we have a couple more, 189, 189. So lots are, have sold this last year in the higher price.
Motion for follow recommendation.
Follow recommendation. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
800, 120.
Okay, so that is a stip. And let's see, 120, okay. So 120 and 130. I'm going to make sure that I'm talking about the right thing for you. Yes, 120 and 130. And I'll, I'll let you borrow my map. I'll have to use it one more time, but it'll be this one and this one, number 22 and 23. When we went up to go evaluate these four lots up here, these two are definitely not very friendly and buildable. And the road goes through them, which has made them smaller. So in, and to say we were in agreement with Mike, he said he could see it valued at 120. And so we were able to pull the adjustment down 0.8 and make it 120, so each. But he does intend to replat those to try to either make one and then an upper lot that we'll talk about more accessible. But he has a lot of ideas. So for both of these steps, for number 120 and 130, we're recommending to lower it.
I'll move, I'll move, follow recommendation. To lower. I'll second that.
Motion by sleep, second by fly again. Follow recommendation. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye. Yeah, those are really large. Finally stood up to you.
Yeah, it's 1800 and then 0020.
I'm sorry, where are we? I apologize.
1800, 00020. It's kind of in the middle, I was in the middle of those two.
Yeah, it's between 120 and 130.
Yeah.
I don't know why I feel like.
Clubhouse lot.
Okay, oh, okay. So this one, I apologize for.
I can't believe we don't have them memorized.
I do have. I do know Apple Springs pretty well, though. They've had great sales in the last three years. Okay, so it's number 20 on this map and that was for me to number out how to get through our review we just did last week. It is the largest lot that's over four acres that he intends to move the, and rebuild the restaurant and clubhouse and then in the parking lot. He was hoping to have it assessed as a parking lot, but we don't have a way to do that. We have it assessed at 300 and, sorry, I have that note here. 329,000. And so that was his request for us to look at it. And so he kept it in the appeal. I can let you look at that. We're recommending no change to it. We have, we don't have a comparable sale in that neighborhood. But we do know that the building is assessed down at the old clubhouse at over 300,000. So when he moves it, it's going to be much more valuable and newer. But we have no way of knowing from, he will be trying to start building June 1st. And at that time, we would know the design and where the location of it. So right now, we're recommending no change because if he abandoned his project, he could sell the over four acres for the 329,000.
We're valuing on.
Speculation. Not speculation.
Second. Kate, motion again, second by sleep, no change. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
This is 2100.
1300.
So you said you're on 2100. Okay, so this one is, okay, the other story I had for you. Okay, so you had number 200 and it was the lot that's here in purple. He intended to appeal this lot, but accidentally wrote down this parcel. And because it passed the appeal date, we couldn't accept it. So there's no appeal on the lot that's in the list. Okay, so we're just recommending to skip over it.
Which one was that?
210.
Yeah.
I have a signed appeal.
Right, he hasn't, but.
No change because he can appeal it, but it's a hill.
Right, right. He didn't mean to appeal that one. He intended to appeal this one, but we can't.
Can't take it.
Yes.
The 210 is, you're not going to just leave it as is.
We'll leave it as is.
You want a motion, hurry.
Yeah, because it wasn't appealed.
We've got a motion in a second to leave it as it is with no change. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Both about.
Hang on.
Okay. 150, 000.
That happened pretty fast. We're not holding up much for that.
Okay.
Which one, say aye on that? 150. 150.
Okay, so these are next to those two lots that we talked about that I gave you a map for that we went and did the 120. It's.
Above the water tank?
Yeah, above the, yeah, it's above the water tank. Do you still have your maps? I mean, I have another one. Oh, I let you borrow the big one. That's right.
Beside that, yeah.
So it's this, it was this area where we did these two for 120. Now we're on to these two, right? So I apologize. So this is the lower lot. Remember, if you were to look at this map, it's number 22 circled. After reviewing it, we did find that this is a very buildable lot. It can have a step basement. Oh, that's the diamond pattern one.
Is it this one with the weird access easement?
Below it and to the left. So right there where your finger is starting to point. That, oh, right, and it should say my other left.
Your other left? This is still.
Yeah, so.
Right at the driveway.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry about that.
Nope.
Okay, so we are recommending no change on this and it's valued at 150,000. I'm sorry, I have to repeat, though. It is valued at 120,000, 120,000.
No change?
Recommend, recommend no change.
All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
We're on 160.
All right, so on 160, now you're taking. This one, okay. This one is now the.
That's what I have. What I'm showing on here on parcel numbers on Beacon is that this is 160.
And 150?
And 150.
Okay.
160 is right. Is that big pork chop?
Okay, so we have the numbers incorrect. So.
Well, I'm just, what Beacon shows online is the one with the weird driveway is 160, 160.
Okay, and that's what I have. Okay, good, okay. So this lot, which is marked number 23. It does have a steep driveway. He is looking to replat those two little ones that you did the stip on. We just agreed to the one below it that will remain. But it has been carved out and it has a flat space that's big enough to build on. And it's. We do not feel it's hard to build on. It will be, there is another house if you go at the, at the end of Wild Burger. Instead of curving around, you'll go up to. They have a steep driveway and a steep flat spot and they have built on it. Sure. I am recommending no change.
Follow recommendation, no change.
Second.
1600, 100.
And this one is just below the water tower. And it's number 24 on this lot, or on this map. We're recommending no change. We already have a adjusted assessment on it of 90,000 instead of 150,000. And we do feel it is buildable. It's another steep, steeper lot, but it is not as steep as your previous. And the water tower will be to the back of the house, whereas the lot that's on the other side of the water tower, we'll be looking right at the water tower if they don't figure out how to put their house up there or improvement. So we do feel it's buildable and it already has a lot adjustment and we recommend no change.
Follow recommendation.
Second. Kate, motion for just now, second by Jenny, no change. All those who favor the motion will say aye. Opposed.
This is 1800, 000.
All right. So this one, we physically reviewed the lot and we recommend putting a lot adjustment on it. It is also a commercial leftover lot that got left by.
Even be sold.
Okay, so it's number 25 next to the large 20, so it's right there. His intention was that it was supposed to be put back into the golf course meadow. He just says it's an error and so it got platted by his, his surveyors. And so what we have recommended is factoring it from 4,800 down to 2210.
But it's still an established lot and you have to work through the process to sustain it.
Right, the only problem with it is that that other lot that we did for the clubhouse lot overlaps it.
What it is, is basically, it's just a little piece of green in the golf course. And there's no site whatsoever. We just put it to the lowest land value just to have a value on it. It is there, but it's just.
It's not buildable.
Oh, no, 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 no.
It's really small.
It's just a leftover in the golf course.
Actually, it's the center.
Follow recommendation. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion very.
This goes back to Simpson's plan.
Oh, yeah.
This is what short.
Prior, okay. Prior to.
That makes sense.
1600, 170?
Yeah.
Oh. Okay. Yeah. I apologize. How can we go back for you guys, for your motions? I have two lots that are two steps that I put together, but these two are the ones that you already made a motion on. Yeah, they are. Map wise. So. These two are on the, okay, so the ones. Should we go forward for these and then it will clarify where we'll have to go back to?
I'm sorry about that. Show that over there.
Okay, so.
The parcel number, it's just that you were playing their own spot.
Gotcha. Yes. So what happened is I thought we were up here on these two lots. These two, these two right here are the two lots. Yes, sir.
So we just need to, we probably just amend the motion and change the parcel number to the correct parcel numbers, right?
Well, when we made the motion, it was on the right parcel number. She was just pointing to the wrong ones on the map.
The description was correct.
Yeah. And, okay, so, and all four lots are up on Wild Burger. These two are the ones that are up the hill that we made the recommendation to take down. And these ones should be from 120 to 75,000. And those are the two little lots. And you motioned for 120. The other two are, without digging them back out, are this pie shape and number 19 here that are the previous. So, and I still recommend no change on these. Or, I mean, I recommend the stip on these going from 150 to 120. So for the pie shape and the square that you, that.
So that was the, you've already. 1500, 130.
And 120.
So, yeah, and those, and that's what I have is going from 150 to 120.
There's a possibility to reconsider it if you want to, but that's something. So just now you know you've matched things out, right?
It was just pointed to the wrong.
Sorry about that. Okay, all right. So these last two now are 22 and 23. They are the small lots and we're recommending going from 120 to 75,000. They're very steep, they're very small. I mean, we have seen that people can build on there, but it could be difficult, costly, but that, those were the things that we took in consideration. And we did hike around these lots.
You had it at 120 and now you're going to?
75.
75.
I'll move with all recommendations.
Um, I'll second. Alright.
Okay.
No change.
It's our time for discussion. Sure, okay. Um, these are really rough lots, if you don't want 75, maybe, maybe something in between. They're gonna be really difficult to build on, just from one hike, from hiking around it. The topo, the road going through. They're really odd lots, so if you want to go somewhere in between, maybe you come up, that would be fine, but 120 might be a bit high for them. That's what I'm trying to say.
We have another session of this next meeting.
Yes, you can.
Can you bring it back? Recommendation at that meeting on these two lots?
Yeah, we could do that.
Sounds great. But the top of that.
Sir?
Okay, so these two, you want to just then push, push to next meeting?
Yes.
So continue, do you continue?
Yeah.
Who made the motion to continue and then?
All those who favor will say aye.
Aye.
Alright, we're done with this.
We're done with the mail in.
Alright, we're gonna take a.
Say something.
I verse, say something.
I love that.
What does it look like?
What are you missing?
Okay. Which one are we doing?
This one has a laser.
This is Mark. Yes, it's.
B E R N D T.
Yes.
Hi.
B E R N D T, Mark.
So Mike, Mark owns a lot over in Whitewood Twin Parks. He actually lives in Spearfish, so he was able to appeal to the county. He has a lot in that area that has some severe drainage issues which embarks on the 25-foot setbacks from one side of the lot, which limits his building site. So what I did is I actually measured out how much of the drainage, it was a triangle-shaped portion of that lot, determined how many square foot that was, and that's what I adjusted the actual assessed value to. So the assessed value was at 58,097. I made the adjustment to exclude that drainage area and took into account the setback situation that he had, and the new value will be 45,400.
Motion for recommendation.
Vernon?
Michael Bennett. Michael and Allison Bennett.
Yeah, this one's simple, it's a lot in Powderhouse. I have it assessed at 198,020, he had it listed for over a year. The last listing price, he actually sent me the contract between him and the Realtor, 169,900. So I'm gonna lower it to, NAC is gonna go down to 165,010.
Motion for recommendation.
Second by Dan, for recommendation. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, Kerry.
Danny Tiger? Tiger?
Yeah, it's Tiger. Okay, all right. We're recommending to lower the value of each structure on there. It has two little handmade, resourcefully collected building materials. So. So. All right, so the property is in the two-bit area off of Noble Grand Loop. It's not easily accessed either off the road, but we were only looking at the cabins that they were concerned about. So overall, we would go, the land will remain at 77,870, and go, the structures will go from 30,000, 30,680 down to 18,350.
Motion for recommendation.
Second by Flannigan to follow recommendation. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion Kerry.
All right, few apartments. This is an administrative correction. This passed through Spearfish because we had the apartment complex on the wrong lot. I moved it over to the right lot, but forgot to take off the discretionary. So we need to just take off the discretionary, so the full value of the apartment complex is at 2,231,270 with the discretionary, which is 80% off this year, it's at 5,54,460.
Move for follow recommendations. Second. Okay, motion by Dan, second by Tisdale, follow recommendation, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, Kerry. Now we get to do a whole bunch all at once. Come up and give us your thought and appeal on it.
All right. Called in regards to his platted lots, and would had liked to appeal him, we're offering, after reviewing the lots, and this lot is going to be reclassified as ag with an ag value. It is contiguous with the owner's other ag land that previously qualified for ag. He has the Ridge Development Tiff lots that are valued at 65,000 each, and with the we were, we were, did not know that in over these lots that doesn't have water, it doesn't have sewage. They do have electrical and gas, but if the owner were to try to sell them at this point, the burden of a new owner would have to get through the litigation and then possible replating if that was required, and they may even have to redo electrical and gas depending on what would be involved, and that, those were his concerns, and so therefore with precedence, we moved him over to ag, or we are requesting to stip them to ag.
All of the Preacher Smith lots.
Yes.
There are 19 of them. But they're still planted, correct?
They're still planted, and that's, it's allowed now under the, in ag. So ag land can be planted, as long as it's it's all contiguous to its huge piece of ground that he owns, that's ag.
That used to happen regularly, you just combine parcel numbers.
And then is there an example like Miller Ranch or something where they're planted?
Lots.
Yeah, there's a whole subdivision underneath.
What would their value in NSB if they were in a building without any, without any utilities?
Without the 65,000, I think that lots in South.
We honestly don't know because of the litigation and all the utility problems that they're having up there. Actually, I don't know when they're getting utilities, so.
It's in city then, that's correct.
Yeah.
But they have electric and gas.
Yeah.
Why is there?
They do.
They can't drop a wall, they set the gas there in the city.
That's why I say there's essentially unknown lots.
Yep.
And they, so this went through the city, but they could, and they approved it, but they couldn't change classifications, that's why I had to come to the county. So I had to go through the city just because they, he lives in the city and they're in the city, so.
But they did change it already?
Well, they, they couldn't do anything.
City doesn't have.
Because, but they agreed with it. They can't change classifications.
So the classification is not changed?
They'll make an application to do that, right?
It'll be changed.
He doesn't need to because his land that's adjacent to it is already approved for ag a long time ago, so.
But there's only, definitely there's only change.
Nope, nope.
You'll just change it.
They'll just change.
Ag taxation and ag zoning are not the same at all. That's what, it's confusing, but that's. Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, motion by Flannigan, second by Tisdale to follow recommendation on all 19, at least, correct?
Yes, sir.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, Kerry.
Yeah, that's a mess. Are we going down machine there?
Yeah. Yeah, we're down to Michael Ritchie.
So Michael Ritchie has been leasing out his ground for grazing for quite some time. Did not realize that he could actually qualify for ag based on the production and the income requirement. So he sent in a receipt showing, and lease agreement showing that he would qualify. So what we're looking at is changing the land value. It's 31.07 acres. So the land will go from an NAC-S classification to an AG-C. It will go from 189,320 to 14,610. The improvements will stay the same with the same classification of NAC-1S.
So he's able to meet two of the three requirements?
He can meet two of the three requirements, correct. It's too easy.
acreage requirement you could not meet.
No, but he did qualify on the income.
Motion to approve.
Second by one.
Follow recommendation.
Second?
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion by Flannigan, second by Mr. Hens to follow recommendation, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, Kerry. Mr. Smith.
Liz Smith, is it Liz?
Liz.
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 So Liz came in and was concerned about the valuation on not only her prop, on her home, but also on the land. She is out on Pendo Road up on Dot's Place. To the back of her lot, to the south of her lot, she has a fairly rugged canyon that is included in her 38 acres. So what I did is I looked at the topography, measured out the area of the canyon, and then to the west of her lot, there's been some issue with children on dirt bikes who drive right through her land, she's scared she's gonna eventually hit them. They have no regard for anything, so she actually had to cut another road in through that west half of her lot just to keep the kids from, well, probably dying at some point in time. Yeah, yeah, and then also to the west of her. Yeah, yeah. And then also to the west of her, she has a large commercial venue going on with Mr. Doll. Lots of timbering going on, noise issues that would probably affect the sale of her property and the use of her land, of course. So when I went and looked at the property, I did reduce the land. I did put in adjustment for the canyon and the fact that five acres of it is now really limited as to what she can because she had to cut a second road through there. So I went from 259,390 to 213,610. And then her log cabin had a little bit more depreciation and the basement finish was not correct on our record. So I made those, the quality and the depreciation, I corrected that. So the house will go from 488,830 to 420,320. And then the pole building that we had in, we had it in as a garage. It's actually more of a shop equipment building, which has a different price per square foot. It does not have anything, but does have three fixtures in it. So I did account for that, but no like cement floor or anything. So it went from 61,500 to 21,680. So the dimensions of the building. It is... I don't have it for you. I can get it though, for you. It's, yeah, I believe it's like 1,200 square feet. With about 14-foot ceilings. It might be bigger than that, but I can't remember. It's been a while since I looked at it. So... Anyway, so what I did, the value is gonna go, the total value is gonna go from 809,720 to 655,610. It went, it went down about 41,000, or 40,000, sorry.
So that's what you recommend then?
Yes, please.
Move, we follow recommendations.
I did go into the property. I mean, I did walk it, and I did an interior review on it.
Alright, we got a motion by Sleep and seconded by Tinsdale to follow recommendation. All of those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Aye.
This is going to be an ag classification, a non-ag to ag classification. He does qualify on the income and cattle. He has 40 acres over off of Jackson Road in Whitewood. So we're looking at changing the land from 217,000 to an AGC classification of 30,130. All of the rest of the buildings on that property, which there are seven of them, will remain the same in value with also the NAC1S classification. So the value will go from 433,310 to 246,440. He did give me documentation. This is a contract in specific to purchase of, oh, sorry, hay and use of pasture for grazing of livestock. Hay will be put up by the owner, Thomas Smith, and stored indoors until needed during the winter months. Hay will be purchased at the current rate of 150 per ton. Pasture availability will be based on seasonal forage production and AUMs, I'm not sure what that is, and cost will be leased at 25 per animal unit per month. So he just started this ag.
So he hasn't actually done any of that?
Right.
He's projecting that's what he's gonna do.
Yes, and the thing is, is that he just has to qualify three out of five years. And if they're just implementing their ag venture, they're not going to have anything for us right away. I'm sorry, what was that?
Classification law allows just the intent.
Yes, but he will have to prove that he is making money.
Follow recommendations.
I know. Yeah, he could have bees. I'm gonna be mad at all of my people. This is a non-ag to ag classification. Stand back. Another one. They make it too easy to get ag in the state.
Slow share?
Yep.
Are we doing one or all three?
All three. He does have checks that he has received. We're looking at 73 acres roughly. This is over off of, in Whitewood as well. Yep, Jackson Road.
Three contiguous pieces?
Yes. Okay. On the first one, which is 21.63 acres, the classification on land land will go from NA-C to AGC from 132,500 to 4,770. The building values will remain the same value, but we are changing them to an AGC1 classification. They, but they will remain the same value. So this one, this particular parcel will go from 433,310 to 23,380. The lot ending in 144,40 is 50 acres. The classification will go from NAC to AGC with a value going from 246,000 to 10,290. The structure will stay at 37,650 with a classification of NAC1. The outbuildings will remain the same value, but the classification will change from NAC1 to AGC1.
May I ask what the checks were for? Were they hay or what were they for?
Cattle. So the total value on that particular property will go from 433,310 to 65,930.
Move with all our recommendations. Is that your recommendation?
Well, I have one more to go, but yeah, so yeah. Alright, so the last one is 143-20. This is the two-acre lot. It is changing classification from NAC to an AGC. The value will go from 54,000 to $290. So the total will go from 54,000 to 290.
That lot is not contiguous to the other ones.
Does it have to be contiguous for it?
It's, it's a whole nother piece away on a corner full of trees.
I believe if you have, how big are the other lots?
50 and 21.
If you have a, if you have a lot that's over 41, if it's within 20 miles of that lot, you can put it in.
Really? So if my, my house is Spearfish, I can put it with 40 acres up in the hills?
41, yes.
It's good to know.
That would change about, I don't know, five or 10 years ago.
Really?
They don't have to be continuous anymore.
As long as there's a one lot that meets the size requirement. You can't have a 20, a 10, a 5, or whatever. You have to have one that's 41.
Okay. So you just need a certain amount of income from ag enterprise.
Yes, you need 2,500 for three years out of five, so $7,500 basically.
And that's not per parcel though, that's total?
That's total.
Been that way for quite a while there. It has, yeah, I was just making sure it wasn't a per person. That's what we're getting. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Alright. So they have one of those old, old, early 1900s homestead little shacks that they've kept on the property. They added on to it in 1984. And the addition, what was the word Christine used? Yeah, they... But so they called and they said it's in really rough shape, at least that 10 by 24 addition. It's unlivable, the floor is caving in, it's got water damage, roof issues. I wasn't able to get out there because it's all the way at the end of Coskella Ranch Lane. They don't live here. It's behind two padlocks. I looked at it on aerial photography and the addition does look rough. She did give me a note that she's gonna be here in mid-June. And she'll let me through the gates and I can go look at it. But for the time being, I am recommending we lower the improvement value, the NAC1, from 13,240 dollars down to 7,960. So that would take the total from 97,940 to 92,660. And then I'll go look at it this summer and get a better idea of where it really is.
Move with all recommendations.
This is located in Paradise Acres up on Maitland. It's a stipulation. Of it, I went up and looked at it, went through the hailstorms up there, couple of years, well, just throughout the years. It kind of sits on a peak, so they kind of get the gist of. And then the roof was damaged and water leaked through, through the walls and in the ceiling. So they had to redo, they're still kind of in the process of that. I recommend changing the value from 501,300 to 490,170 based on depreciation and the condition of the structure.
Move with all recommendations.
Okay, so Austin Burnham owns an old double wide with a few hodgepodge additions off of Pendo Road. He asked me to come and look at it because they are in the middle of doing an actual interior remodel. A few of the rooms are completely gutted down to stud and insulation. So when I went and looked at it, I made the adjustments for that particular issue. So the land will stay the same at NACS. Six acre, 6.48 acres at 97,000. The house itself, the kitchen is not complete, it's missing all the cupboards. And it has one center island, does not have any countertop. Two bedrooms are completely gutted down to stud and insulation. The one bathroom has just the toilet, so I made adjustments for that as well. So the structure value at this time will go from 241,730 to 154,220. The remaining buildings will remain the same at 1500 and 8,910, which is a partially built garage at this time. I did put a review on it to go out and look at it this fall to see where he stands as far as his remodel work is going. So the total value will go from 349,230 to 261,720.
This was appealed through the city of Deadwood and they we were not able to get inside of the mobile home. We couldn't reach the couple. And so we were able to find comps for similar mobile homes around Deadwood and Spearfish. Although the outside looked really nice until I could get inside to know the condition of the structure for this mobile home. I was able to come up with the fact that we should stipulate the property. Also, Deadwood Mobile Homes are the last, one of the last conversions over to the new software. So they took in a lot of the Marshall and Swift rates that we had gone up. So after reviewing the interior, and I am recommending a functional depreciation for this mobile home. And lowering the value from 25,470 to 10,550.
You weren't able to finally get any?
Yes, it has severe water damage. The floor is very concave in areas and sinking. They put cinder blocks under the hot water heater to try to keep it from falling through the floor and things like that.
This is also another non-ag to ag classification change.
20 miles, that's been 20-year miles.
20-year miles, yeah. So this gentleman is Ed Hinker. I'm sure most of you are familiar with Ed. He owns eight other parcels that are already considered ag that he qualified on. I'm not sure exactly of the number of acres that he has. But he did, I did have Nicole check, check it to make sure. So this is an eight-acre parcel that is going from an NAC classification to an AGC classification. The value is going from 121,610 to 1,820. Oh, I'm sorry, 1,000. 1,920, sorry, sorry.
It's just bare ground.
It's just bare ground. I believe in his letter is exactly what he said. Eight-acre parcel is...
Yeah, there's, there's a 35 beside it, 20 above that. Yeah, he's got, they can, that's all right beside each other.
Does the list with ag use this?
He does not. I can pull, because he applied for ag on those properties a long time ago. He doesn't have to reprove because he's already qualified for it on the acreage that he owns.
So he wouldn't have to use that at all?
No.
Move with all, or suggested.
Second. Okay. Motion by sleep, second by James for all recommendation. All those who prepare the motion will say aye.
Right.
Trying to think if you qualify if you're inside city limits, that's what you could.
You can.
You can.
Yeah.
Twenty miles.
Five forty-one acres, one miles from the end.
Yeah.
Yes. So, um, Mr. Anus's property is on, uh, the lower. Sorry if I don't think. I apologize. Okay. Um. His property is at the lower slope of Majestic Heights in Majestic Heights Court, where there are four, um, separate, uh, parcels. And he has chosen to reclaim a, uh, old cabin and barn and recreate the cabin and make the barn into a garage and then do a middle section that is new. Um, after getting a chance to come into the structure and see what all is happening and where it stands at, um, percent complete, he's doing this all on his own. And this is a, I forgot, this is also a cabin that came out from Carstens Cabs' area. That's where he brought it in from. And so once getting a chance to really see it and then being able to go back and, uh, realize the age of, um, the part of the structure, we're, I'm recommending that, um, the value go from two ninety-three, one seventy down to one nineteen, six-ten for, um, the existing percent complete functional adjustment to lower the value, uh, as well as the depreciation on the old cabin because it's pretty rustic inside.
Move with all recommendations.
All right. This is a Kirschman. They have, um, the prop, they have, this one is and so they have the two, um, parcels. This is one of them that does not have an improvement on it at the end of James Drive, um, Alice Florence Naomi. Uh, it's, at first it looked like they have amazing property to build on until I physically walked it. Um, they, I recommend that we put a land, a lot adjustment to, this is number thirty-two, so one fifty-one thirty-two, and I recommend um, that we removed a lot adjustment. So, um, I did supply them with the same, um, uh, comps that sold there. Uh, so their value is, um, how do I say it? Is acceptable in the hundred thousand dollar range, but I don't believe that it could be one twenty-nine. I do leave it to be one oh seven, six forty.
I'm going to just say.
Two point nine one.
Two. You recommend leaving it same value.
I'm actually recommending that we will lower it to one oh seven, six forty. From one twenty-nine, one seventy.
And that was also topography?
Yes, yes.
I'll move with all recommendations. I was second.
Person again?
Yes. All right. So they, they appealed, but I was able to find, um, some items, so where after reviewing, uh, the land and, um, their topography also drops off to the backside of, on Lewis Drive, uh, when you're coming into Alice Florence Naomi. Um, when you're trying to look at your aerial maps, um, yes, you can put in your contours, um, but they just didn't quite justify the overall picture until I physically walked it. And the house sits at the very top part. Um, the rest of it all goes downhill and into lot thirty-two. So I'm recommending that, um, we've put a lot adjustment on it and we go for the land going from one twenty-five, two eighty to one oh four, four hundred. When the overall property will go from four fourteen to seventy down to three ninety-three, three ninety.
Move with all recommendations.
Second.
Okay. All recommendation. All those who prepare the motion will say aye. I should probably use from this one. Does this deal with the ads?
This one is pretty easy though. Phil Kissicketti. House, a small house, eight sixty-four square feet, a parcel across the road from where he lives. He didn't think to come in and let us know that back in the middle of August, he moved that structure to Buick County. So all we're simply doing is removing the structure value. I did do a drive-by, it is gone. No change to the land value. So from one forty-four, nine forty to nine forty to twenty-two, one for the land.
Follow recommendations. Second.
Plan again to follow recommendation. All those who prepare the motion will say aye.
Aye.
All right, Ronald Kokesh. I was not able to get to this property. It is, it is way back there. On, uh, Schoolhouse Gulch. I tried, not able to. Um, but I talked to him about it. He hasn't made any updates since he bought it, which was in, when did he buy it? It's been a long time. Uh, nineteen ninety. He has a Forest Service lease that's coming up fairly soon and he's not I guess there's certain standards you have to have those cabins to. I didn't know this and he, it isn't, and he doesn't know if he's gonna put the money into it. Um, so he said I can come out there this summer and look at it and I can get to it. Uh, so I lowered the structure from twenty-eight, two sixty to seventeen, one sixty. He said too, the tornadoes have been through there. They had, it had a lot of damage, so.
The, the aerial just makes it look like a barren little tiny shack on top of a knob.
Yeah, yeah.
There's dead trees and nothing. It's really bizarre looking from the picture. It's like, that's in the hills.
He, he wished it would have been more, but he accepted it at this point and, cause I said I needed to get back there. And he does have functional, his logs are rotting on the ground. Yeah, there's lots of stuff wrong with it, he says, so.
Second. And the Forest Service gave him a lease.
Back in the day.
And they're looking at them all over.
So I guess he said, yeah, twenty twenty-eight his lease comes up. And there's certain standards, I guess he has to get his cabin to, yeah, so. Not sure.
Aye.
KPP Holdings.
Oh, it's me too. Okay. Uh. So KPP Holdings, this is a piece of ground. Has this here, hold on. Try to get this fast. This is a piece of ground over by Adams where he owns that big, uh, I guess that was a power plant in Lead on Kirk. Oh, here it is. Anyway, this piece of ground, I guess we must have overlooked before, cause when we, I finally looked at it. It's hard to see, but literally, so this is the Mickelson Trail going right through here. Here's the big power plant. This piece is with it, this piece and this piece. Uh, it is useless.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, there is no place you can't put anything on it, uh, especially with part of the road on it and then part of the Mickelson Trail going through. So I put it in, uh, the lowest land table and it was three point three five acres. So it went from seventy-two thousand fifty to seven thousand three seventy.
Move with all recommendations. Second.
Jill Orwick? Yep.
Every time you come up here, it costs us money.
I know. You guys need to make it harder to get at.
Another one of those?
No.
No.
No. Set your acres higher. Okay, this is Jill Orwick. She lives in Texas. She owns a property over in Whitewood. I have never actually been in the property and she appealed because she thought it was a little steep for the house that was built in nineteen oh nine. And then it did have some fire damage at one point in time and they're continuing to kind of, um, fix as they go. It is rented. But anyway, so I went over there, um, I was able to get an interior review. Um, the lot that they have above the, um, above the porch, which is access through the house, was actually incorrectly measured. Um, it went from two hundred and twenty square feet to a hundred and ninety. Um, the depreciation on the property itself was a little bit high. Um, they do have a new kitchen in there, but the majority of it is fairly nineteen sixty-ish, I guess you could say. Um, not a lot of updating going on. And then they have in the back, there is a addition that they built onto the garage that is dilapidated, um, that she does use for a shed at this point. Um, but it is not the, the best built, let's put it that way. So we're looking at leaving the land value the same. NAD will stay at twenty-two thousand five hundred. Um, the NAD one structure value will go from a hundred and eighty-one thousand five forty to a hundred and fifty-three thousand eight forty. And then the shed was at, which was actually put in as a prefab with no depreciation on it, and it is not. Went from twenty thousand, or two thousand eight hundred and fifty to six hundred and ten. So the value, total value will go from two hundred and six thousand eight ninety to a hundred and seventy-five thousand nine fifty.
Move with all recommendations.
This is, uh, south. So I had tried to get to this property. Um, you can get to it a couple different ways. It's kind of, it's off of Tinton and then you have to take Wagan. Yeah, yep. Uh, Jersey Springs is where it's at. Tried to go, uh, Rough Lock Falls roadway and that's blocked. Then I tried to go around south up Tinton and I just. Yep.
Too much snow up there.
There was. Yeah, I was just kind of being a chicken too. Ten acres is with this. Um. And then there is a little cabin on it. So the cabin doesn't have any, um, sewer. Um. No well, no electrical. It's basically just kind of a building without any utilities. Um. And I'm gonna go out there this summer to look at it. But from what they were saying, it's got quite a bit of depreciation to it and it's without all the utilities as well. Um, so I recommend that the land value needs to be adjusted, um, to equalize. There were a couple lots in there that they were adjusted differently than these two. This is kind of butted up to Forest Service. There's four different lots in there. Um. And two of them were the same, two of them weren't. So I would like to go out there reevaluate them to make sure they're equalized. For now, this is the only one I can do. Um, so I want to equalize it, make the land go from one hundred and seventy-four thousand to a hundred and sixty-two thousand four hundred. And then with the structure, I would change it from twenty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty dollars to nineteen thousand three hundred and ten. So the total would be from two hundred and three thousand six hundred and thirty to one hundred and eighty-one thousand seven hundred and ten.
What was the justification for reducing the land?
Um. Two of the lots were quite a bit lower. Adjusted lower than this one was. Um, back then it could have been because of the sale prices. They look all similar to me. Um. But without getting out there too.
Well, what it looked like too was that, uh, they had all been adjusted the same except for one lot, which had a much higher adjustment. So it was adjusted to be lower because it was a much bigger lot. Um, and so that's never been changed, but just to make the adjustments similar, we just adjusted on just a little bit to get the same as the other one. And basically to equalize it, yeah.
And it's still higher than the, there's two other ones in there that are a little bit lower, but until I go get out.
You'll go and look at it this summer, right?
Yes.
I'm sure it isn't gonna be in, you aren't gonna be able to get to it for a while yet.
Yeah, I was kind of bummed about it, but.
All right.
Okay. All right, uh, Mr. Sullivan appealed and I was able to, uh, he's doing a slow, uh, do it himself build uh, in the Valhalla subdivision. And I was able to get in and see the structure for what it is and how, um, it was perceived to be designed as a story and a half, but it is not. So I've cha-, uh, changed the style and I've updated other items on the, uh, parcel card. And so along with that and knowing where he truly is in his completion of, I'm recommending that, um, we lower the structure value, uh, from two forty-one, five twenty. Whoop, yes. Well, let's go, I'm sorry, let's just go on, on the loan. Two thirty-six, seven ninety to one seventy, oh, six, zero. And then in total, it will go from two ninety-six, nine twenty to two thirty, one ninety.
Move with all recommendations. Second.
John Vogel owns a lot in Ruby Ridge subdivision within the city of Spearfish. It is on the southwest part of the town, the upper part of Charles Street. Kind of southwest of the college. Um, but yes, even though it's part of Ruby Ridge subdivision, A, it is the largest lot in that subdivision, plus it is behind the Charles Street lots. Yes, access to his lot is either by easement of the very upper lot or off of Tinton Road. And, um, it's not improved with utility or anything at this point, so based on the topography, there's no street improvement at this time. And it's not consistent with the other sides of the lots that are developed with access to Charles Street. As I've updated that land table, it's so large, it took a higher hit, right? So I'm proposing to reduce the land value from one thirty-nine, six eighty to one nineteen. Reduce the land value from one thirty-nine, six eighty to one nineteen, seven twenty.
Move forward. Probably was a lot.
It is one point two-five-nine acres. The others are like typical smaller residential lots that are right on Charles Street.
Move with follow recommendation.
Second.
Change the motion by Jennings, second by sleep, follow recommendation. All those who. Uh, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Winners, team.
You're gonna like this one.
Wonderful.
That's a good start.
I mean, it's the same thing you've been hearing. Uh, he has adjacent land of this down off three eighty-five. It's already classified as ag. He's already applied for it, qualified for it. And then these two parcels would add an additional thirty-one point three zero acres into his ag. He's getting ag through. Uh, what do they call it? Stewardship plan for forestry. Um. So we would just be adding these two. In all the rest of his land. So the first one, the parcel that ends in zero two zero dash zero zero, NAC. Would go to AG dash C. The land value would go from one forty-one, five hundred to three thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. Parcel number ending in zero one zero dash zero zero. Um, his improvements on that one would stay the same, so it would still be two hundred and eighteen thousand four seventy. But the fifteen acres of land would go from NAC to AG dash C. Um, and the land would go from one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to three thousand and seventy dollars.
Move, follow recommendation.
They, they don't use it for anything, do they? And it's just maybe a little timber on it.
Apparently in South Dakota, that's all you need.
Follow recommendation, almost a favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close. Carry. Down to. My glasses unfolding.
Okay, this is also south, um, Elk Meadows is where this is. And it's five point three one acres. Um, there's. A few lot, well, I don't know exactly how many lots there are, but they kind of run around. They're kind of circle each other. South Elk Meadows is where it's at. Um. So five point three one acres. Um, there was a lot that sold right next to this one and it sold for ninety thousand dollars for the same amount of acreage. Um. We have a hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and seventy on this one. So I would like to adjust it to equalize with the one that just sold. Um, put it at eighty-five thousand four hundred and ten. To equalize with it.
Move with follow recommendation. Second. In, move by Jennings, second by Jennings, follow recommendation. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Robert Peterson, we have a couple for him. We do them both same time?
Um, we can, certainly. Okay, so the, uh, first one was twenty, is that correct? From the, yes, okay, good. Okay. So, um, this lot, um, these are back behind the Aspen storage on Whitewood Creek Road, but way far back. Okay, in fact, they're behind, uh, Polo Loop on the other side, um, so they're, they dropped back behind the mountain and they're back there. Okay, so, um, we were able to go out and look at the property and get an interior. Um, he appealed, um, his land and his, uh, structure value, so. Um. What I did do is after reviewing the land, um, I actually raised his, um, lowered his adjustment, which raised his property value or land value. And it went from sixty-three thousand three hundred to seventy-one thousand seven forty. But the structure itself, uh, just needs a lot of love and, uh, it's going from one sixty, uh, six hundred and fifty. Down to ninety-three thousand six hundred and eighty. With the total values going from two hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty down to one sixty-five, four twenty.
Second. Motion by Jennings, second by Jennings, follow recommendation. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Oh, yeah.
Oh, sorry, we could do the other Peterson if you want.
Oh, I thought, I thought we were going to vote, okay.
Oh, oh, sorry, okay. This one was just on the land itself, um, and I did, uh, put it in line with the neighboring lot. And gave them both the same lot adjustment after walking it, um, and, uh, so the land value will go from eighty-three thousand one hundred and seventy. Down to seventy thousand six hundred and ninety.
Follow recommendations, second. Motion by Jennings, second by Jennings, follow recommendation, all those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Now we're going to weigh in?
Yes, sir. Okay, so, um, the Merkel property, uh, I did some parcel card updates. Um, they had a, um, detached garage in there, but really it's not. It's a smaller, um, prefabricated storage. Uh, that they put their, um, bikes in and stuff, so, um. I changed some stuff on the parcel cards, so, uh, land remained the same. Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry, we did put an adjustment on the land. We went from sixty thousand down to fifty-four thousand. Um, the land goes into the middle of US Highway fourteen A. Um, they also have some BLM land, uh, to access that they have to cross over. Um, and then the lot wrote, the property is pretty steep, so everything fits right on that flat area to, um, have the mobile home on. And then, um. So, sorry, there was quite a few things. So the land's going down, the mobile home is going down from sixty-six to sixty to fifty-seven, one sixty. And then, uh, the exterior garage is going up, so there were, there is, there were two on the parcel card. One remained, the other one turned for prefabricated. This one, they ended up putting concrete in the bo- in the floor. It used to be, uh, in as dirt. So it was in at thirteen thousand four hundred and forty and it's going up to nineteen thousand seven hundred and forty. In total, you're going from one thirty-nine, seven hundred to one thirty-nine hundred. Yeah.
Most follow recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Jennings, second by sleep, follow recommendation. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. I'm ready to try and pronounce this next one.
It's Jirga.
Jirga.
Jirga, it's Norwegian.
Anytime you throw a J in there.
Okay. Um. Michael came in, uh, and asked me to come look at his property on the deadline. Uh, he's at one sixty, Tim Street. He has like the four little cabins and a shed, um, back there. Um, so after reviewing, uh, the property and the improvements and reviewing the parcel card. We've, uh, made corrections and we have the itemized, uh, corrections on here for the parcel or for the improvements. So, uh, the main cabin is going from twenty-two thousand three hundred to thirteen, eight ninety. Um, the middle cabin is going from eight thousand four hundred and sixty to six thousand eight hundred and thirty. Um, a little cabin that was just used as a three fixture bath, um, which also a rodent decided to have its day in there. Um, so it's quite damaged. Uh, it's going from thirty-five, forty down to twenty-eight, twenty. And then there was a, there is now a cabin. It was a prefab, but he has re- retrofitted it or, um, it, so it's going from a. Prefabricated storage into a cabin, uh, so it's going from two thousand three hundred and sixty to five thousand seven hundred and eighty. Do I have that right? Oh, and then there's a shed that was not on the property that is, uh, valued at two thousand three hundred and eighty, thirty. I didn't bring my glasses, sorry. Thirty's right, thirty's right, thank you. Glad I give you these things. Thanks. Okay, so the parts, the property is going from sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty to sixty-four thousand eight hundred and forty. And that is what we've recommended for a stipulation.
Move with follow recommendation, second. Okay, motion by Jennings, second by Jennings, follow recommendation. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
I propose, motion carried. Thank you. All. Wonderful.
All I have to do is look at you, huh? So Jordan apparently sells timber off of this particular parcel.
How many acres?
It's thirty-nine point four, four-three acres. He did bring us in. The receipt, we'd like to look at it. He sells timber for three thousand dollars.
So it's all amount?
A year.
Oh, a year.
Twenty-five hundred.
Carry on. Three out of five.
Three out of five years.
Pretty well timbered land in this.
Pretty nice, sure.
Yeah.
So the lands will go from an NAC dash S designation to an AGC designation. It will go from three hundred five thousand five eighty to eight thousand nine hundred and forty. The property total will go from one point five million six, sixty-eight thousand five thirty to one million two hundred and seventy-one thousand eight ninety. And this is also up in the road.
Move with all our recommendations.
That's pretty good.
And move with all recommendation.
It's the, um, barn dominium.
I know, but where's he coming up with all this? With this, uh, timber?
All right. You know, I'm short of saying, short of him coming in and we calling him a liar. I mean, what do you do if they have proof regardless, I mean.
He produced a receipt, right?
He produced a receipt, I mean. He will, yes, or something, yes.
Piece up above where he lives.
Cause he could, he can do bees or he can do other things.
Yeah, he could do other ventures. I mean, yeah, he can do bees, he could have chickens, he could, you know.
Your recommendations.
He passed, he had a motion second.
Can you recuse yourself? Uh, yeah. I recuse myself, here. I'll see you. All right, so we got the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, make.
Did you say name?
Three, three-one-one.
You got one more.
Baker Dee Dee?
Yeah.
It's a mobile home.
Oh. What else?
Is it going ag?
No. He's on a rented lot. So, um, Baker owns. Baker owns a nineteen seventy-nine mobile home up at Ken's Trailer Park. Um, he asked me to come and look at it because it is pretty much nineteen seventy-nine. Um, there are issues in that park and I know that there are some in, with the moving, like once it sells, it has to be moved because it's too old. The problem with Baker's is that his has an addition on the back that is completely open to the backside of his mobile home. So this is the new master bedroom in there. Um, so with that, taking that into consideration and the fact that it is pretty much nineteen seventy-nine. It does have a really sweet wet bar in it, by the way. Um, that does not work anymore, so I made some adjustments to that, to, to the depreciation of that, the structure. So it's gonna go from twenty-seven thousand nine twenty to seventeen thousand eight forty.
And he asked to move, did you say?
If he wants to sell it, the person who buys it would have to pay to have it moved, which in my experience is anywhere from five thousand to seventy-five hundred dollars.
Coming from the manager, not the owner, correct?
Yes, well, in my experience as well, trying to move my mom's held house out of Vicentin.
Most follow recommendation. Second. Again, follow recommendation, all those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Are we done, Russ? You're in recess until the twenty-second, all right. We're in recess, all of us recess.
Second.
All those who favor.
Aye.
One oh one.
You're all listed, you're going to do it.
Five C.
Have five here, how the room? Hi, everybody.
It's like saying. Yeah, you gotta go. Spearfish.